Call the meeting to orders for Wycomico County Council, Legislation Section 2025-14 for July 15, 2025. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Father, who art in heaven, thou be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda?
移到
Second. Any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Good morning, Mr. Benson.
Mr. President, I do have one announcement to make before we begin, and that is the work session on the agenda, which pertains to the structure of the sanitary district will not be held today.
Okay. That was at the request of the county attorney?
That was at the request of the county attorney, correct.
Good morning, Mr. President, council. We're here this morning for a public hearing on legislative bill 2025-08. It's an act to amend section 19-1 of chapter 19, certain leases and other contractual obligations, conditions of the Wycomico County Code, to add a new section requiring county council approval of a resolution of any contract for professional services and to define professional services for purposes of this provision. And again, it's here for a public hearing.
Mr. Benson, this time we open the floor for a public hearing on legislation bill number 202508. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific legislation, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public comments. The public hearing on legislative bill number 202508. The council will not be voting on this bill today because at our last council meeting, we decided to give Mrs. Pam Olin, our finance director, sufficient time to get the data together that she would like to have to present to the council so that when we bring this legislative bill back, we'll have all the necessary information at hand. Mr. Benson?
Second item, Mr. President, is a public hearing on legislative bill 202509, an act to amend chapter 99 of the Wycomico County Code titled Vehicles Counting, to require decals to be permanently affixed to the exterior of both doors of county vehicles in a uniform manner, and to exempt the Wycomico County Circuit Court from section 99-3E, that employees use a county vehicle for official business if available or not receive mileage allowance. The purpose of this bill is twofold. One, council adopted a vehicle ordinance. In the vehicle ordinance, it required that county emblems be placed on the vehicles. Council has determined, I think, that they've not been done, that's not been done in a uniform manner, and the intent is to make, to require them to be affixed in a uniform manner. And secondly, since this was adopted, it was determined that the Wycomico County Circuit Court has county employees, those county employees occasionally have to travel for county business. They do not traditionally use a county vehicle. When they do that, they therefore use their own county, their own personal vehicle. Under the existing law, they would be required, they would not be permitted to be reimbursed. The purpose of this is to allow the county, Wycomico Circuit Court employees to use their private vehicle, but also to be reimbursed for mileage.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. This time we open the floor for public hearing on legislative bill 202509. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this legislation, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on legislative bill number 202509. Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative bill 202509.
移到
Second.
移到
Any discussion? Any potential amendments to this legislation?
Sure. I make a motion to add a new section to 99-7 to be titled Retroactive Act applicable
applicability. Words are hard. Applicability.
We can't pass it if you can't pronounce it.
To state the provisions of this chapter, as amended by legislative bill number 2025-09, shall apply retroactively to the effective date of chapter 99 titled Vehicles Counting, as established by legislative bill number 2024-12.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the amendment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment passes unanimously. Any other discussion on the legislative bill as amended? Roll call? Yep. Seeing none, all those, we'll go by roll call. All those in favor of legislative bill 202509 as amended, we'll say aye. Opposed? We'll say nay, beginning with Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Wynn.
Aye.
Councilman Ennis.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative bill number 202509 passes unanimously. As amended, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Ms. Hurley, good morning.
Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on resolution number 98-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year '26 operating budget to make a supplemental appropriation from the prior year fund balance to perform renovations to the Child Advocacy Center in the amount of $40,000. This is a request to amend the fiscal year '26 budget to add the $40,000 of Narcotics Task Force funds to do renovations at the Child Advocacy Center. And we have Mr. Charles Smickel here, Deputy Director of Finance.
Ms. Hurley, at this time, we open the floor for public hearing on resolution number 98-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on resolution number 98-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 98-2025.
移到
Second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 98-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next for your consideration is resolution number 99-2025. This is to amend resolution number 85-2025 to accept grant funds and approve Lead for Life, Inc. as a vendor for the local management board, also known as the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children, in the amount of $94,968.80 from the FY26 Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. And we have Ms. Stephanie King here from the local management board, if you have any questions.
Ms. Hurley, entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 99-2025.
移到
Second.
移到
Any discussion or questions? Joe?
I do.
Ms. King?
I'm from
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to have you here.
Stephanie King, Director of Local Management Board.
So, besides questions to you, I just want to express that I'm, I've been watching these groups, I guess, come together, and I don't know if there's been any new ones formed or not, but with all the money that's being, I guess you can say, thrown out there, I'm having, you know, some issues with approving this. And I guess, last meeting, last time you came in front of us, we talked about the reviews of this and how you made sure that they were legitimate and they did, you know, this money was going for where it was supposed to be. I don't agree with the tier programs, you know, the money that's being collected from the taxes of the sale cannabis. Cannabis affects everybody in the whole county. But I guess my question is, this morning, have you reviewed this group? Are they legitimate?
So, Lead for Life actually has been our vendor in other programs, and this resolution is just to amend, they've already been awarded funds.
I know.
I just requested the incorrect amount, so this is just to correct that amount. But yeah, Lead for Life has done work for, they've been our vendor for several other programs through, over the past few years.
So, in the presentation here, if you'll go to page, let's see, 23, I think it is.
I don't think she has a copy of our brief book.
I do not.
nervous when I try to do this. So, I think it's page 23. We've got the four places that this group is serving people from, right? One is the detention center, correct?
Yes.
The other one's a child detention center that's on Nanticoke Road?
Yes.
Okay. Where is the prison on 203 Pacific Avenue in Salisbury?
I have no idea.
Well, that's listed as a group of people that they're serving. They're also serving Poplar Hill Correctional.
Which is no longer in
No longer. So, are they really legitimate? If they've put this in that
They are. They are legitimate. I can tell you they are legitimate, and I can tell you that we
How are they serving a prison on Pacific Avenue in Salisbury?
I do not
They've put that in here. It's on page 23, Josh.
Could that be a home for children of
Nope, there's just somebody living there. In fact, it's, it's in 22, I think, Josh. Yeah, there it is. State Prison, 302 Pacific Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland. Poplar Hill Pre-Release Unit. It's been closed for years.
Yeah.
How are they serving people there? You know, the state has passed this, and I understand that it's our responsibility, probably, and I'm not fussing with you, don't get me wrong. I just, I'm tired of it, you know? I can't, I can't deal with this, handing this money out. You know, if it goes to our wrecking parts, that's fine, and maybe Habitat, but I think what we're going to see here is just a lot of groups forming, just to get money, to say they're doing something, so. But I really want to know why it says State Prison on Pacific Avenue, and why they say Poplar Hill Pre-Release Center.
Yeah, I think it's a valid question.
And what I'm saying is, if you've reviewed this, why didn't you question that?
I
Why didn't the county executive's office question it? I mean, this is actually where it comes from.
So
I'm responsible for putting it in there.
The county executive's office doesn't review our RFUs. That is, our staff and our board reviews those RFUs. And the Wycomico County Detention Center, they do work with inmates that come from there. So, I think if they listed four places, and we know that they are serving two of them, and we've seen the oversight, that may have been why it was passed through. I can't speak for certain.
You have a board that reviews all this, but nobody, nobody else questioned the Salisbury Prison on Pacific Avenue or the Poplar Hill Pre-Release Center?
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yes, so maybe, maybe we should wait to prove anything, to have them maybe come forward and actually tell us, maybe if we can invite Lead for Life to come and explain what they're doing or what they're up to, and certainly these discrepancies. I, of course, want to applaud my Councilman Holloway for looking through detail, page by page, to see this, to find this, and to make sure that we're being accountable with the money that is put into
Also, for the record, there's only seven counties in Maryland right now that are distributing this money. Other counties are not even distributing the money because they're waiting for more guidance from the state. And I guess my question there is if there's, was there 24 counties in the state? Okay. So, if we have the remainder of the counties that's not even distributing the money and waiting for more guidance, are we not jumping the gun possibly on sending this money out because of the fact that other counties don't feel like they've got the information that they need?
I don't think so. I think we have, we did this last year, and a lot of very successful programs were run last year with this funding, and the ones that we awarded this year, I think, will be extremely successful as well. So, I don't know that we necessarily jumped the gun on it.
I mean, I've seen some of the programs, and I agree that, you know, I mean, I agree with some of them, but some of them I really have to question because, you know, I think, I think there's probably, with the millions of dollars that's going to be handed out in this, there's probably going to be some people that's going to be taking advantage of it, so. I just think there needs to be more oversight, especially when you read something like this.
Jeff?
Yep. I just quickly Googled 302 Pacific Avenue, and it comes up as Delmarva Prison and Jail Ministries, so it must be some sort of outreach effort. I don't know that it's actually a prison.
Right.
But that's what it's listed as, Delmarva Prison and Jail Ministries, at that address.
Just a question. There's an attachment, performance measures, and I think when you made the presentation, whatever, a meeting or two ago, mentioning yearly renewal, is this evaluation part of a yearly renewal? And in fact, do you not look at results and how the money was spent, et cetera? If you could speak to that?
Yeah, so we do site visits. Our community program coordinator will go out, she will do site visits, she will look at their performance, and they have to account for the people that they've been serving, proving that they are in these Tier Four, Tier Five areas. We do the same thing every month with financial oversight. They submit their invoices to us, we go over the receipts, what they're spending money on, make sure that it makes sense, it's what they said they were going to spend money on. And so, we do have that oversight. We actually do two site visits per quarter, and we do monthly financial oversight.
So, you can at least determine by that process as to that the money was actually spent, and it was spent for the objective, the original objective?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if there's any way to actually measure results in terms of, you know, what actually was improved, but you do have a process in place to monitor this?
Yes, and then to, on whether or not people are better off, so, all of our organizations have to, they do surveys with their participants, and they usually do a survey, like a pre-survey, post-survey, to see where people are at, whether they are better off after receiving services. And those, that's how they collect their information, and we get all of that data every quarter.
Thank you. Joe, I'm on that board. I haven't had a chance to really become 100% engaged yet because my scheduling is just, has been a little off with what their meetings are, but I was able to sit on one portion of one vetting process where they went through the applicants, and I thought it was very thorough, and there are a lot of agencies, you would be surprised, I think I said this the last time Ms. King came here, there are a lot of agencies, Joe, that I, you look at, you're thinking, this is fly-by-night, it doesn't really add up, and they were, they were throwing them out right away. Would you be able to supply, redacting the names of the agencies, would you be able to supply the council with those charts?
Absolutely.
Of the vetting process, so we can see what questions were asked, and what determinations were made to qualify or discount any of these agencies?
Absolutely.
You'd be surprised to see how very thorough it is.
Also, when Jeff brought this up, I'd look that up, too.
Yeah.
Okay. It'd be interesting to know if the principal in this agency is possibly the homeowner of that 302 Pacific Avenue.
If you could also answer the questions for Joe about this agency and as well as the Poplar Hill.
Is zoning correct for a prison on Pacific Avenue?
I did not check
No, I'm just saying, we should, we should check
I would check that.
Make sure it's in the right tier, you mean?
Right tier.
No, make sure the zoning is, planning and zoning's, you know?
Oh.
I think, I think the citizens on Pacific Avenue would probably be interested in knowing that there's a prison ministries on their street that's
You could make that request, Mrs. Hurley, of planning and zoning?
Sure.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And what about Poplar Hill? I mean, that's been closed for years. How would that end up in there, John? I mean
Hey, that's a very good, that's a very good question.
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and there, I would have to go back and look at the scoring sheets, but that may have been brought up in the comments, and they, there may have been points taken off for that. So, I would have to go back and look at the scoring sheets from the board members, and they may have noted that, taken points off, but still decided to proceed with them as a vendor because they are known, they do, they have exhibited doing excellent work in the past, and what they were proposing other than those two, it may have been that they, you know, looked at the rest of their proposal, and they take, they took points off for that. But I would have to go back and look at the scoring sheets to let you know for sure.
My guess is that was probably listed the last time when we made, gave our original approvals on all these projects, too.
John, Poplar Hill's been closed for what, 20, 15 years?
I'm guessing that Poplar Hill was in the brief book the last time when we approved the original fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's something that I guess is, could be easy to miss if you file, but you're 100% right, and I'd love to know the answer. That would be great to know.
Absolutely.
You have a question, Josh?
I just want to make a comment. This kind of a program is very important. This is, we didn't mention it in this whole conversation, but this is for incarcerated, incarcerated individuals returning to, you know, reentry into, into society. I think it's just worth noting, there's only four countries in the entire world that have a higher incarceration rate than the United States, and that is El Salvador, Cuba, Rwanda, and North Korea. So, nowhere, even remotely, is any kind of other civilized society having an incarceration rate so high as the United States. So, I don't know what we're doing wrong here, but I know what we can do right, is to make sure that we help the folks who do want to reengage, that we do it well. So, I think it's worth the credibility, making sure that Lead for Life, that we hold them accountable. If they're, if they're doing that in our area, then they need to make sure that they're crossing their t's or dotting their i's, and I think it makes sense to get more information into it.
Not only them, but some of the other programs, too.
Yeah, that makes sense, too.
So, yeah, I mean, a copy of the, of the process that you're going through with your questionnaires and all that.
Absolutely.
Of course, you would redact, I think you would have to redact the agencies because some of them were rejected.
Yes.
And that, I think that would be a big help, so. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 99-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
I'm going to vote aye. Chair votes aye. Resolution 99-2025 passes with a four to two vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item for businesses, resolution number 101-2025. This is amending the fiscal year '25 operating budget to reflect an increase for the State Department of Assessment and Taxation's office cost. And you have Pam Olin here, Director of Finance, if you have any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 101-2025?
移到
Second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of res, excuse me?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Okay. Ms. Olin? Good morning.
Pam Olin, Finance Director?
Morning. Can you explain to the public how this occurred? Apparently, it's statewide, it's not just Wycomico County, is that right?
Yes, we, we got a, an email after the start of the fiscal year telling us, oh, by the way, we've underbilled you, is basically the summary. And here's how much it is, and we're going to take it out over the next four periods, next four quarters that they bill us.
Okay.
Well, for our purposes, we set a budget based on the amount that they tell us at the beginning of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So, in our budget, we had a dollar amount with the new inflator, because again, remember during the legislative session this year, the state has decided that we, as a county, in every county, have to cover more of the costs of the state assessment office. So, we already had an inflated number in our fiscal '26 budget. With the fact that we got this after July 1st, our budget had already been struck, and it's not an insignificant amount of money. To start off the fiscal year, in the whole, that amount, so, because it blatantly states it in the email that it relates to prior periods, I had a discussion with our auditors, and I felt that it was appropriate, that it could be something that would be what's called accrued. Basically, we will put it on the books as a liability in fiscal '25 because we know about it before our books are closed, that we owe this liability related to prior period. As such, we also still had funding left in our contingency account in fiscal '25. So, I am, we're requesting that we use those contingency funds, there was about $300,000 remaining in contingency, I've been tracking that all year. And as such, we would like to use the contingency dollar amount to be able to put this on the books. It would be on the books during the audit, and then as we get billed it, we wouldn't take the expense in fiscal '26, we would take it against the expense we already charged in fiscal '25.
At a recent Zoom meeting with the folks at MACO, they indicated that they would be open to spreading this out over time instead of paying
Well, they're spreading it out over four quarters.
Four quarters, yeah.
So, yeah, that, that doesn't spread it out over time, really, because that's all still within the same fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, again, because we have notice of it, because it relates to prior periods, it is in an accounting purpose, a prior expense. And as such, we can take it in fiscal '25, and there are sufficient funds in fiscal '25 to make that accrue with this budget amendment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 101-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Ms. Olin?
The next resolution is 102-2025. This is authorizing Carter Machinery Company, Inc. as the sole source vendor to provide parts for OEM Caterpillar and Cat. Trained employees must repair and conduct preventive maintenance on Caterpillar equipment to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year 2026. As a reminder, the SM behind the resolution number means supermajority. This resolution requires five council members to vote in favor of it in order for it to pass, and we had Amy here, Kornodle, our purchasing director, if you have any questions.
Six, do we, can we use four? With only six members, can we use four? As a supermajority?
It goes by those present, so yes.
Thank you. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 102-2025?
移到
Second?
移到
Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 102-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is resolution number 103-2025. This is authorizing Vermeer Mid-Atlantic LLC as the sole source vendor to provide OEM parts, and Vermeer trained employees must repair and conduct preventive maintenance for Vermeer and Wildcat Trommel HG600TX grinder parts and service to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year '26.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution number 103-2025?
移到
Second?
移到
Any discussion?
I have one question that Mr. Corey probably can answer.
Morning.
Morning.
Ladies first.
You know, purchasing agent?
Adam Corey, acting superintendent of landfill.
Morning.
Morning.
Good. This piece of equipment, the
Trommel.
Trommel? Is that the one that needs the
Yes, sir.
The repair?
Yes, sir, it does.
Does the second shredding of the mulch, is that right?
The Trommel's the one that does that. So, we got our Peterson grinder, our Vermeer grinder, and Vermeer's subsidiary Wildcat is the Trommel. The Trommel's the one that earlier, late last year, blew a belt in operation, small fire started, we extinguished it, and we've been waiting until the new budget cycle to be able to repair it. Once we repair it, we'll be able to make our second run mulch, that we can actually sell to the public.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool. That's all I got. Yeah, thank you.
Pretty easy, wasn't it?
Yeah. Not bad.
I was getting nervous.
Yeah, yeah. We got to repair the Vermeer and the Wildcat to get them back up in operation.
Any other questions?
I have one. I'm sure when you select these pieces of equipment, they're very specialized, in fact, I'm familiar with Vermeer's name in my past life.
Yeah.
And I assume that it's, you can't purchase this without having sole sourced parts, or even if there are other parts available, unfortunately, because it, I don't know if there's any way to measure what we're, you know, the relative price level for those parts, there's any way to measure what we're, you know, the relative price level for those parts, being that it's sole source, you know, kind of a monopoly. I, I've got a feeling that has, that's the way it has to be, but I just wanted from the public or anybody to speak to that, that issue.
It's a very good point, Councilman Ennis, and yes, with those two particular pieces of equipment, and our Peterson grinder, which is the newer piece, you know, the, the company is very strict on any other work being done on it. Now, if it's a grease fitting that comes off, or something very simple, replacing the teeth on the grinder itself, our staff does that in-house, but once you get anything past that, once you start to talk about hydraulic connections, exhaust manifolds, you know, it, you gotta, you gotta go to them. The Vermeer itself and the Wildcat trommel, they've, they've got some service life on them, so we're, we're keeping them alive, and they, they work very well, they just, unfortunately, are extremely expensive when you do have to make a big repair, you know.
All those in favor of Resolution 103-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you both.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good morning, Ms. Chetel.
Good morning. Morning, President Cannon, good morning, County Council. I, Anjali Chetel, the internal auditor, would like to present for Resolution 104-2025, adopting the annual audit plan for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 104-2025?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead.
This plan has seven audits, one review, and there's no consultations on it. In addition, the IA has budgeted time for regular non-audit activities. I don't know if you want me to go into detail on the audit projects? No? Okay.
I was telling, you should tell her earlier, a lot of it I didn't understand, it was uh.
I tried to put a little detail on each one, like example test for specific objectives, just because there's been concern in the past by audities about scope creep, so I thought having this in there would kind of try to confine it and give them the heads up so they don't feel like there's creep later on happening.
I think this question would be on the third-party, non-salaried units audit, what is the, what is the true objective there?
Um, so the, there's a lot of units in Wycomico County that, in the budget, they're listed as departments, but then there's no actual staff in it, so we, we're basically using third parties to, to do the tasks of the county, for instance, like there's, the libraries, I think is one, you know, there, I, I listed various ones here, so Department of Law, Volunteer Ambulance, Volunteer Fire, Protection of Animals, Gypsy Moth Control, there's, there's many of them. Some of these wouldn't actually be audited, because there could be like conflict of interest for some of these, or it, it may not be that they're really being done by external entities, by third parties, but for those that, we do have third parties doing services, or we're giving money for particular reasons, to look at the contracts, make sure that there are contracts, or make recommendations on if there should be contracts in the future, and then if there's compliance with those contracts. Those are some of the ultimate things, so it's, it's basically compliance with the county policies and procedures, and then effectively and efficiently using resources and reporting accurate, reliable information. Those are the, the main objectives.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, um, how are you on your audits you're doing now, as far as coming along? You know, you had the purchase card audit, credit card audit, whatever.
So the purchase card audit is for the next fiscal year, we took it off of last year's, because the prior one had been completed towards the end of this current fiscal, or fiscal year '25. The gift card review, I'm currently working on that right now. It's a lot of data to look through. The cash audit, one of them, I think I'm almost ready to start writing the report, there's kind of getting to root cause analysis for, for one area. There's, the, the grant one is, I'm, I'm still waiting for data, to be honest, on the grant one. The, uh, the cash controls, there's two different departments, one of them, I, I don't quite have everything, but I do have appointments. I'm going to be doing a field visit tomorrow for one of these audits, I think that's for the, uh, the revenue one, though, not the cash one, but maybe we can look at both during that site visit. And, uh, part of the delay in wrapping up the fiscal year '25 audit is in part because of the budget review time period and, and the pause on the audits during that time period. And then I'm also one person shopping, I have.
All those in favor of Resolution 104-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you. Okay.
Also have an update?
Yes, update on the peer review. So a peer review was conducted of the Wycomico County Office of the Internal Auditor. The focus of the exercise was to satisfy the Institute of Internal Auditor Standard 8.4 External Quality Assessment, and I'm happy to inform you that the Office of the Internal Auditor received a rating of generally conforms. I created a action plan with five general areas, and there's a memo in the brief book. We can discuss it more if you want, or, okay.
I was reading this, I see you can receive ratings of generally conforms, partially conforms, or does not conform, and I see you received the highest rating. You know, I sat in the day that the ladies interviewed us, and myself and another council person, and I thought their questions and their, their comments were really good, and I'm glad that it wasn't me that they were grilling, instead it was you. But maybe this will calm some of the discouraging words you've been getting from the other side of the government about the job you're doing, I'll put it that way. Don't be nice about it.
Thank you. Is it okay if I put the, the report from the peer reviewers on the IA website?
Yes.
Okay, great.
A hundred percent.
Thank you. And then one, one question about my processes generally, I'm, to use an official framework, I've been using a framework loosely before, I want to officially make COSO my framework. If you have any concerns about that, if you want me to give you more information about what COSO is, it's just a framework I would use to compare the policies and procedures of the county for internal controls. Any concerns on that? Okay.
Any questions or comments?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Good work.
Thank you, and I would like to give a thanks to the different county departments as well in this, the IT department, you know, they, they helped make sure we had the laptops, county attorney reviewed the, the contract, and then the council office staff. Sometimes Lynn and Laura, they, they do a lot of work for the office, and I think they helped out also as, in part of my peer review, so.
Thank you very much, and congratulations as well.
Thank you.
At this time, we open the floor for our public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
I thought you were going to get away with it, didn't you? Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. Just a couple of things real quick. Hopefully, in the vehicle legislation for the county, there will be some teeth put in it when the regulations are not followed. The current regulations that are in there, that went into effect on March 10th, have not been followed, and to my knowledge, there's been no action taken. So hopefully, once this is revised and, and gone through again, there'll be some action taken when people decide that they don't want to follow the legislation. Second part, real quick, and I don't know just what the council can do about it, but they have developed a program for ethics complaints with the executive branch, with getting an external attorney involved in it versus Mr. Benson or Mr. Wilber. There needs to be something put in place somewhere where the people who file these complaints get notifications that they've been received, get updates on what's being happening, who's being assigned to it, or something. These, uh, ethic complaints are being turned in, and that's the end of it. There's no word, word back from the county about what's being done, whether it's, whether you're right, wrong, or what's going to happen, so maybe there needs to be a little fine tuning on that legislation or something, some kind of definitions or parameters put in on it that'll show what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Out of breath from running up here, I hope that buys me an extra 10 minutes. Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County, I'm very much looking forward to the work session on the, on the landfill situation. We've beaten a dead horse on a lot of this stuff, but just a few things I'd like to reiterate before y'all go into, into the work session. The Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan for 2025 through 2034 stated, and I quote, "The Newland Park landfill is adequate to meet projected demands for the foreseeable future. However, the county should begin to explore the possibility of expanding into adjacent areas of the Newland Park site or ID possible locations for a new facility." This indicates that there, that no short-term crisis was identified, and, and it was identified seven months ago, apparently, only long-term planning was recommended. The plausible explanation for the administration's failure to identify an impending crisis is that since the current executive took office, the landfill, landfill division has had six different acting superintendents, most of which were completely unqualified. I haven't seen the needle move until Mr. Corey came on board, and I do give him credit, that since he came on board, we are seeing the needle start to move, but it's way overdue. It was pointed out during the, the press conference held by the county executive that, that an aerial survey was done in March, but the haulers, the commercial haulers were advised before the county council was. And then the county council took the appropriate action to initiate emergency legislation. She even admitted in her press conference, and again, I quote, "We knew this crisis was happening. We've been working on this for the last two or three months." So if she knew there was a crisis, how come she failed to inform the council? And of course, infamously, the executive said during that presser, "Until there's a crisis, there's really not a need to communicate. What kind of a management strategy is this? A crisis was identified, the executive still failed to communicate the situation in a timely manner to the council so that they could take the necessary legislative action." The executive claimed that the council's emergency legislation was not in response to something the executive was doing. Hogwash upon finding out that the commercial, from a commercial hauler, that the executive intended to phase enclosure of the landfill, which is just about the most ridiculous non-solution to a problem I've ever heard, the council took appropriate and immediate action to prevent the disaster that otherwise would have occurred. The executive branch has operational control of the landfill, but take, but failed to take the appropriate action in a timely manner. Design of cell number seven should have started much sooner than it did. The executive apparently knew there was a problem, failed to take that action. Out-of-county trash is the problem, it's filling up too quickly, so why has this administration been accepting out-of-county trash for more than two years? I've got more here, but I see my time is up, so, oh, just close with saying, I, I'm sorry, Madam Executive, you own this, you own this, and my hat's off to the council for having taken the appropriate legislative action to resolve this problem that the person who has operational control has failed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schober. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments, council comments. You ready? Jeff?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Hope everybody's having a good summer. Looking forward to Mako next month, the summer conference. That's always a lot of good information, and I equate it to drinking water from a fire hose, so we'll see if we can catch what we can. Thank you, that's all I got.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I have to read in German, sorry. Let me off guard. Seeing none, entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the local government article, section 3-305B8, to consult with staff, consultants, and, or other individuals about, excuse me, pending or potential legislation, PFAS litigation, and to protect the county's legal position. It's a motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item on the agenda is an open work session for a pension account budget transfer. Ms. Olin, I believe, is.
She probably doesn't know we're done already.
It's a quick meeting so far.
See if she's next door, maybe.
Should be watching on TV.
I'll wait, thanks.
He doesn't, he doesn't need power. Here, I'll put in my stuff. So I understand council had a question on the budget transfer that we did related to the pension. Charles has kindly put together a, a quick PowerPoint to talk about our pension briefly, but also talk about the reasoning for why we did this transfer. So I'm going to let Charles run through it, and then you can ask any questions you would like.
Charles Schmeckel, Deputy Finance Director, thank you, Mr. President. Just want to explain some of the context that this decision was made. I'm basing this off of our past pension reports, the most recent one we have is from June 30th of 2024. I'm going to try to explain as much as I can about the pensions so that I can understand it, but I want you to think about a pension as kind of filling a bucket. We've got three main sources, we have investment earnings, we have employee contributions, and we have the employer contributions. For '24, we did quite well with our investments in there. The employee contributions, that's under the council control, employer contributions, that was in the budget process, that is entirely under the control of the county government. Investment earnings, not so much. There are deductions in the pension, investment expenses, administrative expenses, refunds of employee contributions when somebody decides to leave the employment, they do get the portion that they contributed back if they so request it, but then the big part is benefit payments. We don't have a lot of control over those items. So in general, we had 16.6 million in additions, 6.82 in deductions, which meant we increased the pension position by about 9.77 million dollars. So as you can see, we did have a nice little increase, and that 101 million dollars is an asset, that's what we have to cover the liabilities. I want you to remember that 101 million dollars. Another aspect that I want you to think about is the measurement of how much we actually contribute to the pension versus what we pay out. So setting aside those pension, or the investment earnings, historically, we've been paying out more than that employee and employer contribution. That's a little bit dangerous, that we want to make sure that we're at least meeting what we pay out. Hopefully, the investment earnings, if all goes well, that's used to cover some of the, well, I know that's hard to read, but there's all sorts of things that go into the calculation of the pension liability. Remember, the pension is an obligation to the employees in the end, and so it is classified as a liability. There are things that we have some control over, some things that we can influence, and a lot of things that we have no control over. Things like the service cost, another actuarial term, the, there's an interest on the pension liability, there's a plan change, assumption changes, benefit payments, experience and losses, and so all of this goes together, and the bottom line is that we have a total pension liability of 137 million dollars. We have an asset of 101 million. We have an asset of 101 million dollars, and that gets us to the 73% funded. All right, so what does that mean? You know, if you go to buy a house and you pick up a mortgage, you don't necessarily have all the money to buy the house all at once in your bank that you can go and, you know, cover that mortgage. There is some risk. That's just normal. With a pension, we don't necessarily have all the assets covered, but we definitely want to make sure that we're in a good position because there's all sorts of things the actuaries can throw at us that might juggle how things go, and it might determine whether the pension is solvable or not. So keeping in mind the things that we have control about are the things that we don't. So this is one of the things that keeps me up at night, is our pension healthy? The historical mantra has been try to give it to 80% funded. Maybe that's not enough according to the experts, but for right now, if we're sitting at 73, let's see what we can do to get to that 80%. And so we have to ask the question, are we contributing enough? And I want you to keep in mind, we forecast that contribution, say, back in February or March of 2024. We go through the budget process, that budget gets passed in June of 2024. So we've determined what the contribution is at that point. Once that year starts from July 1 to the following June of 2025, we have no control over what gets put out. We don't know who else is going to retire, if there's addition additional payments that need to be made. So like I said, that's one of the things that we don't have a lot of control over. It's kind of hard to forecast. And that's just what we're trying to realize, all right, so we need to see what we can do to strengthen the position. And so where we have significant assets, but I'm sorry, significant liabilities and not enough liabilities to have.
Assets.
Sorry.
Try that statement again.
Wow. Because we have significant liabilities, but only 73% of the assets to cover those liabilities, I suggest that it's kind of like a huge ship that you make minor course corrections now, and that way, over the years, we will eventually get ourselves to a position that we need to that we would want to be in to where the assets do cover those liabilities. It increases the likelihood that our contributions will exceed our deductions. Making another contribution, it demonstrates to the actuary a good faith effort in meeting that obligation, and that's kind of important when they go about making their assumptions. And it takes the county additional steps forward to being that 80% funded and beyond. There are some things that make this additional contribution possible. The charter allows budget transfers to be done. Historically, the county does not spend all budgeted funds, and a review of the budget year to date indicated that 2025 will be no different. We've seen the income tax receipts for June of 2025. We still have two more months, but again, it indicates another year of substantial increases to the fund balance. And let's face it.
Not substantial increases to the fund balance, it's not use of the amount of fund balance we expected to use. There is a difference because we did budget for a significant usage of fund balance. Sorry.
And then we want to make sure that it's understood that this disbursement is being done for the benefit of the county, making sure that that pension is in place, meets the obligation to the employees. That's been a principle that the executive has put forward, listening to council comments over the years. It has been indicated that there is a commitment to a strong, healthy pension plan. We recognize that we currently have a greater pension liability than assets, and like I said, we need to show that commitment to the actuaries that we're going to meet those contributions, so.
So based on that information, we have had been monitoring our results through the end of the fiscal year and determined that there was savings in different accounts that had the ability to be utilized and make a transfer into the pension account at the end of the fiscal year to increase our contribution. As such, we utilize those funds as the fact that they were budgeted to be used and spent in fiscal 2025. We use them for the benefit of the county, the county employees and the county retirees. And when I took this role five years ago, our pension was in the 50% level. Those were decisions prior to my arrival in this role, and I have worked hard between making determinations and talking with council about the fact that we haven't for the last two years made fun deposits into our OPEB fund because that's over 120% funded. So we have an OPEB fund that is overfunded, and once it's in the fund, we can't take it back out. So it is in OPEB, and we are over 100% funded. OPEB is another liability like a pension. Rule of thumb is you should be funded somewhere between 80 and 100%. We're at 120 approximately. So again, we are working to get both of those funds between the 80 and 100% funded level, and this was one way to continue to meet those obligations.
Benefit of myself and the audience, can you explain the difference between OPEB and pension fund?
Yeah, so pension is your benefit that you get associated with your years of work and based on your salary. OPEB, it's O P E B, and it stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. Basically, if we offer anything into retirement that is not based on your salary, and in this case for us, the only thing we offer is health insurance. So we offer health insurance for those who meet certain criteria, who have retired from the county, and they can carry that benefit into retirement. There is a portion that the retiree pays, and there's a portion that the county pays. And as such, again, the actuaries make a determination as to how much it's going to cost us to pay the employer share of the other benefit that we offer. That, I want to say, became a requirement to put on governmental books about 15, 20 years ago. It used to be the only thing you had to show was pension. And even before that, you didn't even have to show pension. So then pension got added by those who make the rules associated with governmental accounting. And then it was determined, hey, wait a minute, governments are offering this very lucrative benefit to their employees when they retire, and as such, you should be recognizing the cost associated with having that benefit. And so I want to say 15, 20 years ago, don't quote me on that, I just remember it in my governmental realm being a requirement to be added. So, yes.
I know you said when you came in, it was 50% funded or so. I guess over the last five to seven years, was there, has there been anything specific to accelerate the pension liability?
So actually, one of the things, if you go back in our audit, and you have to understand, one of the things that actually accelerated the liability was the fact that we were not, we, I'm saying collective we, council, executive, finance, was not, we don't have a policy as to how we fund our pension. So there's nothing that the actuary can go point to, and we didn't have a history of funding the amount that was going out the door. So those two things make the actuary go, oh, well, you have no, we have nothing to rely on to show us a history that you're actually going to make the payments that you have that are required in the current year. So that actually generated a significant liability my first year of being in this role. They call that a play, a change in assumption because they couldn't point to anything that said, hey, you're willing to make your current payments, and so if you're willing to make your current payments, then you'll make your future payments. Well, we weren't making our current payments, so now they have to assume that we're not going to make our full future payments, and as such, our percentage was going down. So one of the things that we have done is work towards making our current payments and then some, if possible, because those two things help us. They did make a adjustment, they didn't bring us back to the original level that we had been at on one of their percentages, but they did adjust one of their percentages, I think, last year for the fact that we have started to make the amount that we spent. And that is totally an assumption based thing that I have no control over, and they're intended to be independent. They are a third party that we're paying to tell us, irregardless of what our policies are, what our liability is associated with the pension plan that we have that exists.
So you say we have nothing that says what we have to do. Would it, should there be legislation passed to say that we have to contribute so much a year to maintain a certain balance that would that would ensure?
So.
I was, let me finish.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry. I guess if I was an employee, a retired employee of Waukesha County, or maybe even somebody from the bond market, I'd be looking at this and saying, hey, they could whittle this down below 50%. There could be other problems now. Think about that question, and let me add this, we did what they called a RIF back in 2008, I think it was, where a lot of folks retired. Would that have had anything to do with driving this down to where it was? I'll ask both those questions before I forget the second one.
So I'll start with the second one. The RIF did play a role. I don't think it played a role in 2020, which is kind of the first year that I was involved in this. I think there were some more current decisions that those those factors, the 2008 had already been kind of flown through is kind of the wording that accountants use is that they've already flown through the model. So the 2008 had probably already had their impact in 2020. But as for the first question about making legislation, I would hesitate at that this moment to do that. The reason being is, is at any point, if we put legislation in that says we're going to fund X, Y, and Z in any given year, we've tied our hands. And we have a lot of things that tie our hands already associated with our budget. So having the ability to make these budget transfers at the end of the year, and to make a good decision when we're setting the budget as to how much we should be putting in there, those two factors are are really already making the change that we need, and we're showing the actuaries that we're doing what we need to do to fund the balance. Could that be something that we look at in the future? Possibly. At the moment, because I, because we have been making these changes, we have been very upfront with Wall Street associated with these numbers. When I have met with Wall Street, we have talked about them, we've talked about what we what changes we have implemented since I've been in the role, and they have seen the growth in the number as well. The number hasn't gone steadily up. It has, if you look at over the five years, it has bounced a little bit, primarily due to investment earnings. There's, there's only, I don't have a whole lot of control over that aspect. Even our investment advisors do the best that they can, but you know, the market is what the market is. If, again, we all had crystal balls, our budgets would be really, really simple to make. We don't. So I would hesitate at this moment on that concept. Is it something that we could explore? Yes. Is it something that I think we should jump on at this moment? No.
Well, you have, you know, changes in leadership. That's, I think that's a concern of mine. You never know who's going to be here five years from now or four years from now. Why weren't we not witnessing this presentation during our budget procedures?
Because I, I'll be honest, I didn't get asked any questions about the number that we were putting in for budget or OPEB. I did mention budget or OPEB and OPEB both during the process. I mentioned the total dollar amount that we were funding. I mentioned the fact that we weren't funding anything for OPEB.
OPEB is off the table because you say it's so well funded or overfunded, but I guess my question is, if this is, and I notice you put it down to your presentation, this is an emergency. You know, we just finished the budget, just voted on it a few weeks ago, and I think it would have been advantageous if we'd have seen seen these numbers then so we knew what we were up against.
So the reason why it was classified as an emergency is, is that so that we had the qualifications to be able to make them funding in by June 30th. Again, we wait until the budget is struck, till we know how much the budget is for the next year. We wait until we have basically May results in in our books. We wait to see, we get notice basically three days before the end of the month as to what our income tax number is going to be. So all of those things play a role in.
In the assessment in our ability to make this move.
Correct. So we made this, we made this number basically on the 20, I don't remember what day we made the transfer. This is 27th of June. On the 27th of June, because on the 27th of June, we had all of those pieces of information finally. As such, we made the budget transfer, we could make it that day, and then we transferred that money out of our bank account that day. If we had waited for the 15 days to expire, we're now in the next fiscal year, and then we can't use fiscal 25's funds. So I don't have 15 days at the end of the fiscal year for for this type of transfer to wait. It literally is if we're going to make it and make it be recognized for our June 30th, 2025 results, it had to be in before June 30th, 2025, and we had to transfer the funds before June 30th, 2025.
Got a different question here. If I heard what you said, the the lack of having a policy regarding funding calls for the third party agency, whomever they may be, to create a larger liability, and that's what's driving, correct me if I'm wrong, I might not be stating this right, the the percent funded to the lower figures, say, for example, the 73, as opposed to it's not actually capturing more benefits, that is, more people retiring, however so. Have I, have I got that understanding correct?
Yes and no. It's one of the factors. I, having had conversations with our actuary, the biggest factor that they pointed out to me when I took this role is the fact that we weren't funding the amount that was going out the door. That was their biggest factor to making the assumption change because we had multiple years' history for them to see that we weren't funding the amount that was going out the door. And so when I arrived in this role, I arrived in August of 2020. So fiscal 2020 was already done. I couldn't do anything about that. Fiscal 21, the budget had already been struck. I couldn't do anything about that. So by fiscal, so by fiscal 22, so I was already in a spot where we had struck a budget that said these funds, this is the amount of funds we're going to do. So fiscal 22 was the first year that I had a lot of control over the numbers that got presented to the executive and got presented to council. And at that point in time, I had also already started to have those conversations. And again, their biggest thing that they were pointing to was the fact that we weren't covering our actual outflows with our contributions.
So that makes more sense than the the first concept that is actually based on historical numbers. I'm sure there is some variation, unless there was some spike up recently that that drew out more.
So this chart is, this shows you what the darker purple on the left is the number that we have sent out the door to fund the pension. The kind of pinky purple number, that's, that is what we have spent in a given year. So you will see, we closed the gap in '23, but that gap, and so the the line, the number that's going down below the line, that's how much we didn't contribute that was going out the door.
That graph does say it all, so it's three or four years ago, then we were satisfying larger benefit outflow than we were taking in.
Yes.
Was there any particular reason that anybody pointed to for that?
Again, I just got told that the prior administration and the prior finance director had made the decision that they were going to cut the amount that was going into the pension.
Was that the 50% year that you referred to?
That was somewhere in 2021 was the first, was the year that I, you can see an actuarial report that shows 50%. And so I, we didn't go past 2020, but the, the multiple years of showing that we weren't funding, and we weren't funding close for two years, the amount.
First off, very commendable that you've been able to move that in the right direction. And I'm glad, I think I'm glad to hear that it's based on historical and not this other liability created just because we don't have a policy in place.
Again, they were pointing to that as the biggest factor.
Okay.
The biggest factor being that we didn't have a history of paying what was going out the door.
Okay. And then, final question on OPEB.
OPEB.
OPEB. Are we able to, over some point of time, put the brakes on that and bring it back down to 100% or whatever?
So for the last two fiscal years, fiscal '25 and fiscal '26, we have not put in any additional funding in those. So every dollar that we would have historically put into OPEB, we have transferred over to putting into the pension.
Okay.
So I believe we hit our high-water mark for OPEB in the fiscal '24, no, '23. '23, '24, I'd have to go back and look, I did not bring those numbers with me, but we hit the high-water mark of in the 120% range. Last year, we, it came down, I think, a little bit, like a couple percentage points, and that's even, and again, they're calculating that on the growth of the cost associated with having health care. So the fact that even though we didn't put a whole lot of money in there, and they still, we still were over, I want to say we were over 115%, somewhere, 115, 120, somewhere in that range. Again, it hasn't impacted us significantly yet. And I have spoken with the actuaries that we are making this purposeful move. So we're not doing this in a vacuum. We're not just going, oh, by the way, we didn't fund anything. We have verbally stated that our current policy is, is this is so overfunded at the moment, that let's use those funds to get the pension. And again, so if we can get both of those between an 80 and 100% funded, maybe he'll sleep better. And I know we will have accomplished something, because we have gotten to the point where we're in a better place. And OPEB is not one, if you look at governments across the state, across the counties, across, OPEB is not one that has a, people don't fund it. So we are, the fact that we are as highly funded as we are is an unusual thing. So us having that at that level is not something that Wall Street views as, yeah, you got this, you're 120% on OPEB. That one doesn't move the ticker nearly as much as, say, the pension does.
But you can't take the money out, but you can control it by funding less, and you can shift that over to-
Yes.
-the retirement.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure I'm on the same page, because this is a lot of information. The items that we're transferring over, are they salary savings from last year?
Well, it was salary savings, it was savings in healthcare, it was just self-
From last year, right?
Yes, it was 25 savings that we budgeted these line items higher.
Right, okay.
And as such, we were then, we transferred it out of that line item.
Okay.
And we could have, and we chose not to, you know, you see here, we did $50,000 of, you know, just out of hospitalization. Well, we could have said, okay, let's just put $50,000 in, but we didn't. We said, hey, there is enough savings here between these line items to make a significant contribution that will help our pension.
So you think this is like front-loading it so that it helps with the back end of the interest, that it'll-
It helps with the showing that we have put a significant contribution in. It helps with the fact that we are still trying to beat the number that we put out the door.
Yeah.
And we are, again, working towards getting this number closer to 80%.
And you say when you first started, we were at 50-some percent.
We hit the 50s while I've been here. And so, but that was related to decisions prior to my arrival.
But now we're at 73%.
Yes.
The difference is because we're putting more into it now? Is that-
That, and we're showing we're putting more into it.
And we're showing, so it's-
It's twofold of that. The fact that we're actually putting more money into it is a good thing.
And then, who gives us the report card on this? Because you might have said it, but I may have forgotten it, because it's a lot of information. So who says, good job, 73%, or who says, good job, 80%, you know?
That would be CBIZ.
There are contracted actuaries.
Okay, all right. So you're suggesting that if we move this money over from savings from last year-
Well, it has been moved, and the money has already gone.
Okay, yes, okay. This will help our report card.
That is the goal. Now, again, the piece that will, is a wild card associated with all of this, is the fact that in that wild card, we have no control over investment earnings. Last year, we made $9 million.
Yeah, that's good.
If you track from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025, and the stock market and what we've been invested in, we've been doing one of these, but so has everybody.
Right.
So-
Relative.
You know, that will play a role. If we tick up a percentage point to 74, I'll be honest, I'll take that as a win, because we're still going in the right direction. If we tick down to 70, I won't love it, but again, we're still in the realm of getting there. I just don't want us to go back to the 50% funded level.
Is this a one-time fix, or are we talking about a multi-year correction?
So I believe this is something that we will continue to do at the end of the fiscal year, if we have sufficient funds to put into this. I think it's a prudent thing to do, but tie-
What about making adjustments to the pension policy, or contribution rates, or benefits, et cetera? Would you be making any type of adjustments there to make it a little more stable?
We haven't made those decisions, but those are always things on the table.
Yeah, because what I guess would be in best interest to everyone, not to come back next year with another transfer such as this.
Again, this is-
This would be an exception and not the standard policy.
Again, this is an allowed aspect of our budgeting process, so-
I get that.
So I don't view it as being anything that is viewed as an exception. I view it as a prudent use of the financial terms that have been given to the county as a whole to operate the budget for a fiscal year.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's always a solution to a problem, but we're trying to avoid the problem.
Right. And so the best way, it's almost like eating an elephant, you do it one bite at a time?
I've never done that.
I'm just asking, are we going to eat the elephant here?
I hope not.
We think we have to do it one bite at a time, and so if we have the ability and we make that assessment, it's definitely something that I would recommend that we do. But I mean, we have to make that assessment real quick.
And we can't make that assessment typically until the middle of June.
Is this generated from like a CBIZ actuarial report that came out, or anything to that effect?
No, it's based on the actuarial report that we had from June 30th, 2024, knowing how much we put into the pension, and also knowing that, that there were still sufficient funds in fiscal '25 to make a contribution.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, well, a couple of questions. First off, I'd make a statement for the citizens. We had, the council does not vote on transferring this money. This is done internally with the county executive's office and the finance department, correct?
Yes.
I mean, you didn't have to come to us to ask permission to do it.
Correct.
Okay. I'm looking at this list. The one that gives me heartburn is the road maintenance blacktop, where you're taking a half a million dollars from the money that our roads should be used for improving our roads. Laura, can you pull up a couple pictures? I got, and you're not responsible for fixing roads. Let me make that real clear. In a road, due to the fact that I'm one of the council members that represents a rural, a large rural area in Waukesha County, the road situation is something that I pay attention to and I get the most complaints about. So when I see this and I see we're pulling a half a million dollars out of road repairs, I'm kind of wondering why. So this is, can you make it smaller so we can see it a little bit, or is that, is that it?
That's it.
Oh, sorry. I guess I should have stood back farther. This is one of the most well-traveled, there we go. This is one of the most well-traveled roads. This is Zion Road, by Zion Church. I've had numerous, numerous, numerous calls over this road over the years. They go out and they patch it. Okay. You know, it could be fixed, probably for a half a million dollars. These other, these other ones are a less traveled road that I called in about a few weeks ago, and the county roads went out and fixed it. So I guess, there we go, there's a better picture. That's Zion Road. And I mean, that's, you can see, hold on, Laura, you can see there's, it looks like there's three different colors of patching there where they've gone out. I guess my question is, why was it decided to pull a half a million dollars out of the roads budget, and why wasn't that money spent to repair the roads?
Money was not spent to repair the roads. I can't answer the question as to why it wasn't.
Uh huh.
But at June 27th, it would not be able to be budgeted for, out of 2025 money, to repair something new. Accounting rules basically says that you have to have contracted, started, and started using those funds before the end of the fiscal year to really have it, for the most part, count against the fiscal year. This is June 27th. They hadn't contracted for this project.
So the failure was in public works, where it didn't get done?
So there was $500,000 available in the roads budget to be able to be utilized, and as such, we utilized it. Because it could not-
Off the top of your head, I'm sure you don't know what the total amount for roads maintenance blacktop was.
I can't remember without-
I wouldn't remember either.
So, again, it was, as of June, again, that's the other reason why we wait till the end of the fiscal year. We want to know, we want the departments to utilize their funds for the intended uses. Well, it didn't get utilized, and as such, why not do it to benefit-
I understand what you're saying, and I understand when I look at, you know, the salaries that was left over. I completely get that. My issue is, we've got roads falling apart in Waukesha County, and that's not your fault, because you drive on Snow Hill Road coming to work every day, right? So you don't get to see that. But I look at this and I think, what's going on? Why do we have a half a million dollars left in the roads budget, when this council sits here and twists their hands every year to figure out a budget so we can maintain roads in the county, and we look at this and there it is? And it's not your fault, and I understand that. So that's my statement.
So you pretty much looked at what overages there might have been, or what excess there might have been in different departments, and that you sort of chose where you would make the transfers based on those?
So for simplicity's sake, we looked at the accounts that had the most significant dollar amounts. It didn't make a whole lot of sense for us to take, you know, $5,000 from this account and $10,000 from this account, and yes, those can add up, but there's also still some needs. There's still some stuff coming through each of the departments. So the department that we took the $400,000 for salaries from, we made a calculation based on the remainder of the year, fiscal year, as to how much they were going to spend on salaries, knowing that we were sitting there at June 27th, knowing what payroll we had, what payrolls were coming, and how many days were left in the fiscal year that were going to have to be accrued. And as such, we then still did not take them to the bare estimate, because I'm a conservative accountant. I don't do that. Taking it down to what the exact dollar amount would be would make me stay up at night. So we made estimates, and we took a look, and we made our best estimates based on the information that we had as of, and we had been working on this for, you know, more than a day, obviously, to come up with these numbers. And we went back and forth, and I conferred with our payroll staff, I conferred with the departments as to, for the accounts that were not, so I asked individual departments, are you going to be able to utilize these funds? And again, we started those conversations prior to the 27th of June. For example, the electric number, we got a major rebate in our, from one of our electric providers, and as such, that is why there's still funding sitting in that account. It's not that we didn't pay our electric bills. It's because we did some things with our provider that got us a rebate. And so why not spend that money on this? That's why we were able to take $100,000 out of electric.
One question I have is, because Charles, you were talking about beneficiary payments were sometimes an issue of concern. Did the 2.5 COLA on law enforcement that we approved, do you see where that may have possibly had any impact on the actual pension plan as a whole?
Well, it was included in their assumptions in fiscal '24, because they knew about it when they were doing this. So they are, they have already, as I use the word, kind of flown through the results, some of those impacts associated with that 2.5%.
So, yeah, because I know when we were trying to make that decision, we were trying to make that work, that was, as you know, that was the big question. Where is this really going to fall in the outgoing years? Is this sort of indicative of that?
Well-
Charles?
No, we haven't seen a lot of that filter through. This is based upon decisions made years ago. That decision is relatively new. It's only starting to seep in as they see the actual workings versus what-
So they've put in their assumptions, again, they've put in their assumptions what they think that's going to grow to.
Who's that?
The actuaries.
Okay.
So they knew about this. There was some stuff already put into this, because again, they knew about this, and so when they're making a liability prediction, they're making a liability prediction based on all information that they have. They had this information. What we don't have yet is actual payments out the door that have gotten 2.5%, because nobody qualified in fiscal '25 for a 2.5%. We won't have that in this next year's audit. The first time you will actually start seeing 2.5% are in fiscal '26. So again, the actuaries have put in their assumptions, the change. We haven't seen the actual payments go out the door, because there hasn't been any payments go out the door.
So this really wasn't being presented in this transfer of funds in anticipation of 2026? This is literally just to take care of existing problems today?
Yes.
Okay. Dave? So it will be very likely that this time next year, you'll be here again, if I understand things. We'll want to continue to increase that percentage, I assume, and, or there's a good likelihood of that. And because of the timing of when the actuarial information comes forth, more than likely, we'll be here one year from now. I'm not saying that's a bad thing.
Right.
I'm just saying, let's just acknowledge, that's kind of like the pattern that we're kind of locked into. Is that, am I correct about that?
So there is potential for us to be coming back again next year. But we have to, we're literally sitting here, the 15th of July, so we haven't spent a whole lot of our fiscal '26 budget. We haven't had any real hiccups yet in our fiscal '26 budget.
Understood.
The other piece in our fiscal '26 budget, we, '25 was the first year that we put any kind of attrition factor into any of our departments. Shockingly, that actually hurt us a little bit with the sheriff's department, because the first time, 2025, was the first time that they actually were fully staffed, so attrition hurt us. So again, we have to get through a full fiscal year to make sure that there are things that haven't, the economy hasn't changed, that we don't get hit with a large something. I mean, again, we came to council earlier today and did a accrual from '25's results, and that was included in making this determination, was that it makes more sense, it made sense to use '25's funds for something that related to '25, instead of carrying that into '26 and having it all of a sudden go, we're already over budget in '26. So again, if we are in a position that there are sufficient funds that myself and Charles, both being conservative accountants, are willing to go to the administration and say, hey, we think there are sufficient funds to ma- say, hey, we think there are sufficient funds to make a supplemental payment of 250,000, 500,000, a million, we will make that recommendation again.
That answers my question. And how much, it's roughly 1.4 million, I think?
It was, uh, 1.5, I think.
Yeah. How much does that move the needle from-
So I don't have, because we don't make the payments out the door, and because I am not an actuary, I can't say that I know the percentage that we're going to go to. So, again, I am hopeful that with the money that we did, did at the beginning of the budget. The other piece that we do is, we try, once we start getting our collections for our tax bills, we try to make our payment for our pension, pretty much in a lump sum, so that we get the investment earnings for the longer period of time. So, we made 2025's original pension amount, I think in August or September of last year. So we had nine months of potential investment earnings in that period of time. Again, we only made one and a half million dollars at the very end of the year. We don't schedule out and make the same amount every month. We make that payment, we have budgeted to spend X dollars on the pension, we're going to spend X dollars on the pension, and we're going to spend it at the beginning of the fiscal year so that we have the time value of money helping our pension.
Okay, thank you.
Dave just got it. Okay.
Any other questions?
I just said one simple question, and, and then you don't have to answer it, but when do we, you might have already said this, but when is, when do we know when we made an impact? Like, is it six months from now, we're going to get-
We'll get a report from CBIZ in October or November for our audit.
Okay, that's it.
And you'll copy that and go with us?
Yes. And it, it'll be in the audit as well.
Okay, okay, great.
But I had from one of our previous meetings to get you those numbers, and it's on my to-do list as soon as I get the actuarial. So, I won't wait till the audit comes out the door. Once we have it, I will let council know. So that was a, a request from a previous work session.
Can we get a copy of the presentation?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Charles.
Next item on the agenda is a Gino, Jean Low Park memorandum of understanding. We have Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation Parks Tourism.
And Pam Oland.
Pam Oland, too. Good, 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 good.
So, I, I'm actually going to start in the fact that this has a, is a financial aspect, but Steve can answer any questions about the amenity impact associated with this for county employ, or county residents. So, we have received a request from the town of Sharp Town to basically be a little bit of a loan aspect for them. They would like, so there's a memorandum of understanding between us and the town of Sharp Town for Jean Low Park. It is a county-owned facility, but with this memorandum of understanding, they, as a community, were able to apply to community parks and playgrounds, which we, as a county, are not able to apply to. So, they applied to community parks and playgrounds, they were awarded an award associated with it, and they want to install lights, that's what the program is. But, they don't have, so way these grants work, like our POS grants, they work as basically their reimbursement grants. So as such, they have to have the money in their bank account to be able to pay the vendor to then apply to the state to get reimbursement. They don't have sufficient funds to be able to do that. So, since this is a county-owned park, since this is 100% grant-funded with the state, and it is something that, or mostly funded with the state, this is something that allows a, a benefit to Sharp Town residents who are also county residents, and as everybody who uses our park system. So, what we're requesting the council, from the council, is the ability to work with our legal counsel to create an MOU that would basically, we would be the bank, we would be the ones that would be paying this vendor. But, this MOU would have to have some parameters in it to make sure that if they don't, if we don't get reimbursement or something was not appropriately paid for, that we, the county, would not be on the hook. But, again, we didn't want to spend legal funds if council wasn't, doesn't like the idea of us being the bank.
So, maybe they have mineral rights in Sharp Town?
So, again, if council is agreeable to this concept, we would work with Sharp Town and our legal counsel to come up with an MOU, and then that MOU would come back to council for approval. So, you would get to see that MOU prior to it being approved.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, the only thing, other thing I'll add is there's, there's an additional MOU in addition to the one Pam referenced, between the state, the county and the town, because it's a county-owned park, and the town is the one technically receiving the grant, they would like to see an agreement that should the town walk away, since it's a county-owned park, that we would continue to operate the lights, and, so there'd be, that would be an attachment to the MOU as well.
I just want to acknowledge, this is Community Parks and Playground, which is funded through the transfer tax alongside with program open space and the rest of this, and that comes from the transfer tax of each one of us selling our property and getting one half of 1% of real estate transactions. So, theoretically, I mean, so, so, to be very clear, it makes it sound like it's the state of Maryland and some other folks. This is our money that we, as a society, put in our own ability to be able to get this money. I mean, may go into a state pot and then come back to us, but regardless, you know, this is, this is our money, so I think it makes total sense.
Just, is this the same park that one of the lights out at the basketball courts down, do you remember which one I'm talking about? And we didn't decide to do it because-
No, no, this is-
It's not the same park?
Different.
My only concern is, is if we, and I have, I'm fine with the lights, just, but my only concern is if, if we do this here and the other people at the other park see that we're putting lights there, I'm just concerned that they want white lights and we didn't let them have lights because it's a dawn-to-dusk park. Is this a dawn-to-dusk park, or is it not?
It is, but once, once you, sorry, once you put lights at the facility, it obviously changes the way that's operated. I think in this case, Sharp Town Recreation and Parks has a very active recreation council.
Yeah.
They program that facility quite a bit, and I think this would give them additional flexibility to program it, so.
So we, we don't have to change anything, saying that this is not a dawn-to-dusk park anymore?
Yeah, they're, in our park rules, all parks are dawn-to-dusk with the exception of the ones that are lighted, so in the-
Okay.
In the park rules, there's exception for that, that typically, in most parks, there's a curfew.
Yeah.
But obviously, what, what the curfew would be is when activities end, so if activities end at eight o'clock or nine o'clock, that, that's the end of that, lights go off and the park's closed.
And the other park isn't really in a town, right? It's this one-
Yeah, yeah, every, every situation's different, I think. I think in this particular case, you have, you have the town and the recreation council, which is very active, they've secured the state grant, which is 100% reimbursable, and it happens to be on a park that, or a property that we own.
Yeah.
So, um-
All right. I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm good.
Two things. I think the amount in question is 230,000? 30,000 for the town and 200 would be forward funded?
Rough number, so, what they've requested is 201, 340.
Okay.
The, the town would pay the difference, so the total project's about 229.
And is there a reimbursement timeline?
Um, I can give a, a rough estimate, so if, if this gets approved and, and we help with the forward funding, I think the Board of Public Works would, would approve the funds probably by October, is the way that would work. So the project could get done in the winter, they could submit for reimbursement. So I think hypothetically, if everything moves along, a year from now, we could be completely reimbursed and, and it's a done, a done deal. We don't necessarily control that reimbursement process, how long that goes, but I, I think a year from now, we could be made whole and have lights at the facility.
I think, Mr. Miller, your, I think your strong suit is the fact that, what I've recognized over the last several years, is that you've established a very good policy of collaboration with the local communities. That's, that's really been your strong suit, and, and we appreciate that. We saw that at the West Side, we saw that with Hebron, and these are very unconventional measures that, that the county is now being afforded the opportunity to take based on your leadership on that. So I really appreciate that. Sharp Town's always been a really great partner, and I, I really don't see any downside to this, and I think whatever downside there might be, I have 100% confidence that we can certainly handle that. And in your hands, I think we're, we're more than competent in being able to address it. Yes, Charles?
Just last thing, I, I guess I, I don't have any strong feelings on this, but just for clarity, are, is there an interest component to this? I mean, I don't know if we said that earlier, I think we started to talk around that, we're not charging this town interest or anything like that, or?
Questions? Where will we go, Ms. Hurley?
They'll come back with the MOU and-
Yeah, we had, we did not want to spend legal fees if council didn't have any interest in us moving forward with this concept. So, we came first. So now we actually have to draft the MOU. And as such, that will take a, a little bit of time. I, so.
That always saves a whole lot of headaches than getting it in the end game.
Well, again, if, if we had spent legal fees and then council was not happy with the concept, then those are costs that we can't ever get back. Not that we're going to get back our legal fees, that's not the way I mean it. It means, it's just, the fact that council likes the concept means that we should move forward with the legal costs.
Right. And any such MOUs, any such MOU should always come to the public first and come to the council first. So, we appreciate you doing that, Mr. Miller. Any other questions from us or anything? Thank you very much, Ms. Hurley.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda is the, the, of course, the proposed legislative section on the sanitary district has been postponed at Mr. Wilber's request. Legislative Bill Number 2025-11 Emergency Act adds new sections to Wycomico County Code to codify the operating days, hours, and locations of county sanitary landfill convenience centers and recycling centers. I'm assuming Mr. Illuminati is close at hand. Thank, see y'all, thank you.
Thanks.
Everybody, how's the Darlene family? You have to bring the kids in one day. Line them up. What you could do is you got to each one of them make public comments. Each one.
Three minutes apiece.
Good learning, good learning skills, right?
I tell you what, you'll see a broad variation.
That's funny. I can't imagine, I know, that must be fun.
Morning.
Still morning. We're going to try to get it all in. Darrell. And Laura. Either one, doesn't matter, or both. Actually, I got to get next to the computer, I'm sorry, Darrell.
I don't, I don't mind.
Would you recommend this, Ms. Laura? It's just for anybody that wanted to come up and see it close.
I think if you put it over near the podium, when they're doing a wide shot, if you put it right next to Andrew, when they're doing a wide shot, it'll-
Okay.
The public will probably best see it.
I think, Andrew, I think to help move this forward, Mr. Illuminati might be to take the actual legislative bill that was titled as If Amendments Adopted, and go through it in chronological order. I know there's a separate document in which you stated Amendment 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Correct.
But I, I think it might be just as easy to take the document titled If Amendments Were Adopted, and go through it to that stage, okay?
All right. So first, Andrew Illuminati, Department of Law.
Darrell Kohler, EA Engineering, Science, and Technology.
Adam Corey, Acting Landfill Superintendent.
Charles Schmeckel, Deputy Finance Director.
Thank you all for being here. And I'll let, I will let you, however you have it planned, you guys have the floor, okay?
Well, thank you, good after, well, still good morning, council, for a couple more minutes. So we have two presentations we wanted to get to you and for the public's consumption as well, on where we stand with our landfill. Some of the more recent history, where we are today, how the legislation, this collaborative work session today, and where we're going to go forward, and then where we stand with cell seven and horizontal expansion. So with that being said, the first on our side of the table today would be Mr. Charles Schmeckel from Finance, who was going to give a presentation on a financial overview for context on some of the points, and then we will move into the actual operations and current conditions and historic portions of the landfill. Mr. Darrell Kohler from EA Engineering, Science, and Technology will be presenting a portion, Mr. Illuminati will be presenting a portion on history, and also the, excuse me, the legislation, and then we'll hopefully wrap up with some good questions and answers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So, after years of relatively limited increases to the tipping fee, we've, the county has been forced to take some dramatic action to raise that.
We put the tipping fee up 30% last year, how could it be limited?
Because we're looking further in the past here, I'll show you in just a minute. Due to limited revenues, solid waste does not have the funds available for future cell construction, and only limited funds available to cover repairs and maintenance and capital purchases. We've, the good news is, is we have been keeping up with the funds available for post-closure costs. So, going back almost 15 years, just to see where that tipping fee has been, you notice right away that up until, just in the last year, it's been relatively flat. It has not been rising with inflation, and now, the reality of the situation is forcing a dramatic increase that you've seen where it's, Joe has said, I'm sorry, Councilman Holloway has said, it's been over a 30% increase. And to avoid future shock factors, I'm going to suggest that yearly increases may be needed. I want to talk about some of these revenues here. The blue are the charges for services, orange is other income, mostly from investment earnings. Obviously, when interest rates were really low, we're not getting much earnings from that, and obviously, the main revenue is still going to be the charges for services. As, the tipping fee has been mostly flat, most of the increase has come from increased tonnage. Reduction in tonnage will have a massive impact on revenues in the future. It'll also decrease expenses. So keep in mind, as we're talking about the finances and trying to limit things, there are a lot of moving parts to all of this. Revenues also need to be paying for the operational expenses, but provide enough savings to pay for future cell construction and capital equipment purchases. Our expenses have been following the revenues to some degree. There are some things that are really volatile, like repairs and maintenance. We have very little way to predict whether a piece of equipment is going to break down in three months or three years. We've noticed that contractual cost has significantly decreased, but likely that's because those costs have been rolled into the capital. And then, obviously, the more cells built and capital equipment purchased, the larger the depreciation expense. You're going to find that personnel costs have remained relatively stable, interest expense has been negligible in the past, but with this projected bond that we're going to be issuing, it's likely to be close to half a million dollars a year instead of the 100,000 that you see there. And again, expenses do not, or these operational expenses do not capture the needed savings for cell construction, capital equipment costs, or emergencies. So keep that in mind. These are just operational, not what we need to set aside for future operations. When you take the revenues, less the expenditures, you get what we call net assets. You can see that- You can see that, starting off there, 2012, you know, relatively low, if not decreasing. In the last few years, it has been increasing. But I would suggest in the last couple of years, a lot of that increase has been due to being able to get interest earnings.
You mean what? I'm sorry.
Interest earnings. We take the amount for the post-closure costs and we put that into an investment account at MLGIP. So we have been able to meet its yearly operational expenses. Anytime somebody has come to you, you know, chances are that's what they're looking at. And that's why everybody's saying, hey, we're doing all right. They're looking at that. The amount of profits is usually a really small percentage of those expenses. And again, those expenses do not, I can't beat this enough, they don't reflect the large capitalized expenses like cell construction or large capital equipment purchases. It's been suggested about a sinking fund. Do we have the cash on hand for future cell construction? We have estimated yearly goals, and a lot of this is, like you said, estimated. But in order to have the cash available for the new cell construction, we need to have significant funds every year. We don't know how much it's going to cost for each cell, but if we can set aside $3 million a year for cells, we'd be in a good position. Given the demands placed on our equipment, as Mr. Corey has told me, you're putting this equipment through hell on earth. It's the worst place to put a lot of this equipment. It breaks down frequently. It is expensive to replace. We need to be setting aside funds to make sure that we can purchase new equipment, as well as, given the unpredictability of those repairs and maintenance, making sure that those costs are taken into account. So operational costs, we've been able to do that, but not also setting aside the funds for future needs. That's kind of where this discussion today has been. So relatively limited increases to the tipping fee due to the limited revenues that we've had and, you know, the fact that we're forced to pay for cell construction by issuing debt this year. I want you to keep in mind, we're going to be paying for 20 years to build an asset with the useful life of three to four years. We had to do that just a few years ago with the 2021 bond issuance. We hope not to have to do that again. So the recommendations, you know, make sure we continue gradual increases to the tipping fee. If it's something regular that we can predict, I think that that's not going to lead us to a fiscal cliff. We need to identify methods of reducing tonnage and make sure that we're setting aside those sufficient funds for cell construction and for capital costs. And don't forget those when we're looking at the financial health of solid waste. So that's... That's all I have. I'll let Mr. Corey.
So what could we do to guarantee that we set that money aside each year? We just had a work session a few minutes ago about pension fund. Would it be something that the council could do that would guarantee that the administration would be setting aside enough funds for future fuel, future cell construction?
I think we need to make sure that we have enough revenues coming in. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I mean, just part of the budget process, just keep in mind, all right, are we being able to set stuff aside? And then, once we review year-end, that's where we start saying, how much did we make? How much are we able to set aside? And that's, we'll need to reevaluate, was that sufficient or not? And make adjustments from there, so. Does that answer your question or?
Pretty much. We just bonded $10.5 million for Cell Seven. What happens if that ends up being nine or 12 million actual?
Well, I was going to say, we need to find the money somewhere. Obviously, I can't answer that right now, knowing, we don't know how much it will cost, and we need to make those plans. Right now, there is a few million dollars. I want to say it was, I'm sorry, I don't have that number on hand of what the exact fund balance was at the end of fiscal year '24. And now that we're at fiscal year '25, that number seems even less relevant. But we need to assess, do we have any savings at all to take it from? And then we'd need to determine from there, do we need to issue more debt? Do we need to take loans from something? And, you know, right now, we probably need to be thinking about those contingency plans, but I don't think that it's warranted just yet to set it in stone.
Dave?
The, I've noticed, or reading some of the financials from year ending 2024, there's the 14.4 million set aside for closure figure. You're familiar with that? Is that restricted from operating capital?
It is.
Ken, is it possible, I'm just throwing this out, this may not be feasible, that we could do an irrevocable letter of credit to cover that with MDE or whomever and free up that capital?
You know...
Or a bond?
I'm about 90% sure of what the answer is, but let me get back to you.
Okay. That would be a pretty significant piece that could be utilized for ongoing capital or whatever, or operating needs. Was the $10.5 million that we just bonded, was that the first time we've had to borrow, bond?
No. We had to do $3.5 million for cell construction back in 2021.
Okay, so not a lot. And just a history lesson, I was on the council back in 2000, and we did have a sinking fund back then, because I clearly remember Public Works Director coming in, asking for at that time, $2.5 million, which was completely available because it was in a sinking fund. So I'm very much in favor of seeing that reinstated, if that's where we're headed, you know, and having some fraction of the tipping fee to account for that funding, so we don't have to go to the bond market.
Dave, just talking about the past, during the recession, county actually borrowed money from the Landfills Enterprise Fund to balance our budget. So things were good at one time at the landfill, so.
The other question I have, in looking at 2024 again, total expenditures were 8.8 million. And I don't know if I've got the right tonnage figure, 166, 496 equates to that same time period. So that's $52 a ton.
Oh, it was higher than that last year. It was 67, then it went to $78 as of January 1.
I'm talking about cost.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. And this is versus that fee of 67.
Right.
And I'm just trying to get these numbers to reconcile. But if you take 8.8 million divided by the ton, I think it's 52, I've got it here somewhere, $52 a ton. So versus a $67 fee, then I looked at, 4 million apparently was utilized for capital. That's $24. I mean, I'm just trying, these are, these numbers are floating out there. So if you add them together, you're at 77. You're still not at 88.
Correct.
Which I think was, it was quoted to say that, or someone was quoted to say that was our cost. So you don't have to answer these questions right now, but I'm looking at how these numbers should reconcile, and they don't seem to be doing so.
It does not take into account the money that we've estimated needs to be set aside for cell construction for the future. And that's why you're having a hard time reconciling that. It also doesn't account for money that we need to set aside for, like you said, an emergency fund for repairs and maintenance and depreciation and some of these other expenses that tend to be really volatile.
So some portion of that 67, however it comes forth as far as total dollars, you're saying is already being set aside for capital expenditures?
It does get put into the fund balance, and that's where you would see that sinking fund.
Okay.
All right. We'll go ahead and proceed with this presentation. I hope this gives some good information. And again, looking forward to a great tour tomorrow with Councilman Merritt and Councilman Ennis. That'll be great. And everybody else, please, when you're ready, come on out. I want to show you what we do. It's not advancing. There it goes. All right. So what we're going to try to talk about today in this particular slideshow is our currently introduced legislation, and we're not going to dwell on that. Everybody's seen it. We're going to talk about the refuse disposal permit and its language, tonnage trends, where we've been in the past three years, out-of-county waste, our history and recent timeline as far as going back to where our, you know, previous geosyn tech consultant volumetric analysis that was performed. We're going to talk about where we are currently with volumetric analysis and that leading up to the, you know, the identification that we got an issue we got to address right now. Our current operational status, what Cell Seven looks like on paper, horizontal expansion, and then we'll wrap it all up for everybody. So of course, July 1, we, the emergency legislation introduced by the county council, we're here today to talk about that work session. And we are really, really looking forward to the collaborative process to make it, make it the best we can for the county. We've mentioned and talked about the refuse disposal permit before. Our current permit expires September 21, 2025. As of July 1, we have reapplied after getting our tonnages squared away and are waiting for our fiscal year '26 to start. So this is pretty much what that front-page document looks like. But the refuse disposal permit is significant in its length and depth. This was the previous application from the county in 2020, where you are attesting to the state, your origin by region is within jurisdiction. I know it's a little bit hard to read, but that is where we told the state, we're testing this. Our tonnage is coming from within our jurisdiction. Our new refuse disposal permit was submitted July 1, again, within jurisdiction, in county sources only. And then you start getting into the meat of the refuse disposal permit. And some of my previous comments about, you know, if you're attesting to the state and the state's permit application and pertinent documents talk about your sources and tonnage, and these are what they are. There's about 28 individual operating documents in Part 1, 2, 3, and 4 that go along with your permit. These are all your phase modification plans going back to 1993, all the way up to 2006, and our current documentation that we've most recently produced. And there they are. There's the whole list. There's more than that. I just put a couple pages on there. But we got a significant bookshelf worth of this material. Talking back on our 10-year plan again, I'll just go ahead and answer the question concerning the discrepancy between January submission and when it was developed, I'm saying adequacy, versus the identification of the issue. The, this was submitted in January 2025, it was probably prepared months before that and finalized in January after resolution with the council. It wasn't until March and then April that we had our flyover data of the most recent survey. If we'd had that flyover data performed just before this document's development, obviously, we would have been making a different change in the language of this document. So just as far as timeline is concerned.
Why wasn't there policy or procedures in place to do flyovers if they, it appears that that seems to have such...
Sure.
On your...
Absolutely. And you're actually required to perform one by, once a year, regardless. And there was a 10-year period at this landfill where there wasn't one performed. So we started redoing them. We ordered another one for December, and we, I want to have one every six months. And I think it's important. Even when you, even when you're ahead of the game with Cell Seven and the horizontal expansion, it's still a good idea. It's a good double check.
Terry, following up on that, is there a third-party agency that conducts that full analysis that was also not including flyover technique?
So we'll get to that later on in my presentation. And I think it'll put some light on that. It's a good question. Yes, sir, Mr. Holloway.
Well, you said they were required once a year to do a flyover.
Correct.
And, you know, the previous executive, I guess, wasn't doing them because you said it'd been 10 years.
A 10-year span of not having them.
Who was in charge from the time, I guess, Mr. Whitelock left until you got here that would have been responsible for doing that?
Let's see, the, yeah, I got here in August. I started working at the landfill in October. Prior to that, you know, we had our other leadership in the Department of Public Works and an employee that's no longer with the county.
There was, weren't there employees that are still with the county that was in charge of the landfill?
Actually, not at the landfill, not within the solid waste division, no, not to my knowledge. There's employees still there that have been there the whole time. We've got employees that have been there 50 years. But as far as management, like for managerial oversight and making these kinds of decisions...
At one time, the Director of Administration said he was going to... I thought he was running on.
I would have, I would have to check with the...
Don't want to put that on your plate.
Yes, sir. Understood. I'd have to check with him on what his role was at that time before I came on board. Yeah. All good? Okay, thank you. All right. So, oops, I know, I'm right. Okay, Phase 2, Phase 3 permit modification applications. We'll just talk about this a little bit as far as, again, the comments we made before about making sure you're in accord with your permit. And, you know, I do want to mention, I think Darrell has some comments about this later as well. When you have a inspector, regulatory overseer from the state of Maryland coming to your facility telling you per your permit, you're only taking inventory from outside, and you need written approval to do otherwise. And an example of this just did occur within the past three weeks in our neighboring landfill. Again, within Comar, the section addresses the types of solid waste that will be accepted. It talks about non-hazardous, domestic, municipal, commercial, blah, 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 and that Newland Park landfill serves the population of Wycomico County and none other. Tonnage trends, you guys have seen this slide before. We've done this during our public workshops and I think during some of the other council sessions we've been with you. But you see that significant jump, especially from '23 to '24. And as we look at the six-month comparison of January to June in '24 and '25, we're pretty much right on track to do the same thing again. So we're going to be in that 164, 165 ballpark. And again, keep something in mind, you know, we're not into the second part of the year as far as you get a, you know, pretty, pretty big increase when you start running into the, coming into the winter as well, as far as December, November, December. So we know that, you know, we've been taking a look at closer at what's coming into our landfill. Again, we've done vehicle inspection reports on vehicles for forever and ever amen, and that is based on code of federal regulations for identification and making sure you're not accepting hazardous waste. Prior to these discussions taking place, nobody's ever really done a down, deep, dirty assessment of really how much trash is coming in from outside of our county. But it's staggering when you have full loads that are self-admitted by haulers saying, my entire route today was, fill in the blank, anywhere outside of Wycomico County, West Ocean City, Princess Anne, Sussex County, Delaware. And these, it's interesting, I'll just share a little anecdote here. Since we've been having these conversations, like after July 1, I was contacted almost immediately by the council president of Dorchester saying, we got to be careful, we don't want to be in the same boat. And then last week, I think Wednesday, I came down off the hill, and there's two compliance inspectors, the chief of compliance for the Delaware Solid Waste Administration, standing at my door asking if I've got time to meet. They're concerned about it, too. And they also want to make sure they help Wycomico not have their haulers come into our county because, you know, it's bad news for everybody.
Isn't it a law in Delaware that they're not supposed to haul trash or derbies or whatever out of their county?
Yes, sir.
They want the trash.
Yes, they do. And he was very, they were very adamant. They were like, we are going to, if we see people crossing that line to come into your county, we're stopping them. That's how serious Delaware takes it.
And actually got a fine.
Yeah. They can be fined like $1,000 per incident. So anyway, just to kind of give you some pictures of where we got it coming from, you know, Newcastle, Delaware, obviously, Crofton, Maryland. I would imagine that's an anomaly. That was actually on the day after July 4 weekend. So I'm sure somebody came down from Crofton to visit their beach house or whatever. But, you know, you never know. Cambridge, Ocean Pines is a regular. We see Ocean Pines every day. Moore, Cambridge, Millsboro, Delaware. You got, you know, Ken, Newcastle, Hanover Township, PA. I don't think that one's really, again, an anomaly. But just to say, you got Delmar, Delaware, Pokemoke City. You got Princess Anne, Berlin, and Ocean City all the time. It's just a daily occurrence. And it's not just that it's a little bit of trash in one truck. It's often the entire truck, you know. So I think I beat that horse enough, but we're getting too much coming in from outside of our county. And we don't want to take it, nor should we be accounting for it. So with that, we're going to talk about some history and recent timeline. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Andrew Illuminati.
So these are the figures we were talking about, or attempting to talk about at the last council meeting regarding the timeline. So in June of 2023, the capacity analysis was 2.7 million cubic yards or 39% of capacity remaining. At that time, annual consumption was 272,000 cubic yards per year. And the focus was on the development of future cells and acquiring property adjacent to the landfill to support the construction of future cells. Increased tipping fees were requested in order to be fiscally solvent, and those points were already highlighted. Here, we have cells eight and 10, which are currently operational. Here we have cells eight and 10, which are currently operational. And as Mr. Corey described prior to this event, uh, in 2020, the last aerial survey hadn't been done in some time. They should be done once per year. And so that 2023 timeline is based off of the then contractors, uh, back of the napkin approach that says in their report as to how much was remaining. And maybe when you think there's 39% remaining, a back of the napkin approach works, but this is who the vendor was saying, this, your guys are good. They're good to keep proceeding. So then Mr. Corey comes in in October of 2024. At this time, the landfill is out of compliance. So we're not even talking about trash coming in, future cell construction, we're talking about MDE saying you're not even operating the landfill appropriately. We talked about the vacuum in leadership for a period of time. Mr. Corey comes in with his expertise from the state now as a county employee and introduces this over dozen of actual operational matters that need to occur just to be MDE compliant. So at this point in time in October of 2024, from when he started in August to October of 2024, when he actually started the landfill, there was still that vacuum, October 24 through, uh, basically March is becoming MDE compliant and you can only attack so many, uh, corrective measures at a time. The corrective measures get done during that six-month period from October of 24 through March of 2025. Mr. Corey is there daily and he's seeing everything else that's coming into the landfill, the, all the tonnage, the increase in tonnage, trying to account for all of that. And then it's a March of 2025 at the conclusion, multiple administrative matters that there's an aerial survey conducted and for the first time, that number from not even 18 months ago seriously comes into jeopardy and it's, there's 12 months of capacity remaining. Additionally, we have a new contractor at this point in time, so we have a new analysis from a different expert to say, this is what you're dealing with. The draft of the budget resulted in the discussion on tipping fees and then there was further discretion regarding the construction of cell seven. So these three interconnected steps resulted in three additional administrative steps, addressing the disparity between the former experts' calculation of annual consumption and the actual annual consumption, as well as a comprehensive analysis of the waste stream. Where is the waste coming from? And that is a huge question. Then there was a plan to extend the lifespan of the current cells was developed. The, addressing the increase in the tipping fee was to hope to be enough. Uh, the increased fee was not passed, so then additional operational measures needed to be adopted for cell seven, until cell seven is operational. And what was proposed was a multi-phase gradual decrease in access to the landfill solely to commercial haulers, not servicing municipalities. And then expediting the efforts to erect cell seven to operational sat- status, but that's not solely a county decision. It's not a matter of the department reviewing and approving matters, contractors getting funding from council. There is our state components and federal components to that. So there is a limitation on how fast cell seven can be constructed. And with that understanding, that's where the restriction to out of county, to the haulers needed to be because not making it to Mar- to the construction of cell seven, as was discussed last time, results in the county this time next year potentially having to pay to haul from the convenience centers out of county. And how far out of county would determine what those costs could be from hundreds of thousands of dollars to millions of dollars. And already the department's done work to find areas that could potentially receive the amount of waste at its current level. However, the hope is with the implementation of this legislation, the complete crackdown on out of county waste, that there will not need to be sporadic closures, that the life of the current cells will extend through the construction of cell seven and that there will not be a need to ever get to that point, that there are limited closures for commercial haulers that serve in-county residents. The projection is with a strong crackdown that this can occur. And additionally, it's important that our partners who service our in-county residents understand this because this isn't a matter of interpretation. When the landfill is full, does not matter where the trash is coming from, the landfill will be closed. That is just a fact. And so we need our partners who service our in-county residents to be judicious, to under, to rework their routes to solely service their in-county residents. Because if not, their in-county residents and their out-of-county residents will see an enormous increase in costs because when, if that time came where there's no administrative or procedural changes, that waste is going somewhere and they are not going to eat that cost and they are going to pass that cost onto their consumers. And so our partners in servicing the county's waste need to be respectful and understand there may be a point in time where this was the best option for them from their budget, their bottom line, but their bottom line will be dramatically altered if and when that time comes because I don't believe anybody at this table wants to limit the closing of convenience centers to permit holders. And because if that happens, that's a completely different problem that we are not prepared to address as a county at this point in time. And so now we can move on to the volumetric analysis, which is, uh, from the current outside consultant.
So, um, we're going to go ahead and get into our current volumetric analysis. Again, this is the data that was put together based on aerials that were completed not only in the summer, but in March. The March data being, you know, put together in CAD, evaluated with our expert and then find out where we are again. Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, before I forget this, uh, you just mentioned the tipping fee, uh, increase was not passed, et cetera. And I'm trying to make sure I understand the relevance of that. It was that becau- uh, were you making a point about there being proper funding for capital or was that because it was an attempt to deter, uh, uh, out of county? Let's just say if our tipping fee was not, you know, close to the others. I, I wasn't sure I followed what you were saying.
It was a deterrent policy. I mean, adjusted for inflation, the tipping fee should be over a hundred dollars. It's not there. That's a long-term capital measure, but from a deterrent standpoint, it was to be not cost productive for out-of-county waste to come in to the county because if the county was above the other counties, then ideally that would have been enough of a deterrent without any closures.
Yeah. And not to go down this rabbit hole too much, but we're currently, I guess, $2 away from our neighbors. We're 78 and they're 80. Uh, not, not to take away from your point, it's still less, but, but on the hundred dollar, uh, is it, is it the calculations or analysis that a hundred dollars is, is actually what it would take?
That was my input using the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics going back to the 15-plus year ago, $50. If you go back to that original, enter it in, it's over a hundred dollars adjusted for inflation.
Okay. So you're just saying, okay, you're just saying from an inflationary standpoint, if you go back to whatever time period, I don't know where you're starting, from $50 taken, uh, inflationary, that, that brings it to 100, but not, not based on actual costs?
Correct. Not for operational measures, but just if you go, so from 2003 to about, I believe it was 2015, that was one stagnant number. And so if you take the, and then there was an adjustment in 2015, then we saw the adjustments over time. If you go back to that original 2003 number and adjust it to today, over 20 years later, it would be over a hundred dollars.
And I follow that. I just think a better benchmark would be looking at your actual cost and if there needs to be, which there should be, uh, a, a fraction for, uh, covering, uh, anticipated capital costs, future sinking funds, so to speak, that seems to be a lot more, um, reasonable and understandable, a method to go rather than, I, I do follow what you're saying, but I just, uh, I, I don't really buy into that, uh, that hundred dollar figure as being so valid. However, I don't disagree with the idea of, of a deterrence as well. Uh, the only problem I have with deterrence is that you're also penalizing your citizens, uh, at the same time as, you know, so, and going back to the original legis- legislation, which had a surcharge or, or some distinction for out-of-county. Uh, I, I, I don't want to see our, our, our citizens being penalized just because we're trying to affect a, a, a behavior.
And our residents wouldn't have been penalized in the sense of as long as it stayed in county, there wasn't a surcharge. So that, but anyway.
Surcharge was sort of an afterthought. Um, I was under the impression very clearly that the increase was not so much a deterrent. We recognize that it wasn't going to create a deterrent at all because as Dave said, that the, the differences aren't enough and it, it doesn't pay for, it doesn't create enough of deterrent for the haulers to change their, their strategies. That's why the, the, the conversation transitioned to, okay, if we don't make this increase in July, if we extend it to January, what will, what will be the cost difference? And Pam said, well, it's going to be roughly about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And at that point in time, the council agreed, well, we would gladly transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, uh, from reserves to the landfill to help you move forward with, with whatever, uh, obligations you have. So that's how I interpreted the money issue and the deterrent issue from the last time we spoke. And again, it, that's still on the table, that if there's, if there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's needed to make up the difference between, uh, the increase we did not do in July to meet the goals up to January of 26. I think council's still very willing to make that difference.
There's been discussions of increased tipping fees as a deterrent policy for the last two budget cycles. Uh, the deterrence goal is we're, we're past the point where the operation of the landfill based on tonnage matters because once it's full, it's full and then it's a completely blown budget on getting the waste out of the county and somewhere else.
And I think, I think you're a hundred percent right and the council agrees with you on that. That's why this legislation is specifically codifying no out-of-county trash. We understand that a hundred percent. I think our issue really is where are we going with our timing and our permits and how we're gonna, how we're gonna make that happen. I think a lot of that may come into play with answers that we're going to need from the state and Maryland Department of the Environment as to what type of leeway or waivers they might be willing to give Wycomico County because they know that this is a huge health issue.
And we, and we've met with them and, and Darrell and I are going to touch on these, those very concerns and, and comments because we have met with the state, they know where we at, uh, are, and they know what kind of situation we're in. You know, they're not gonna, we're not coming into this blind. They, they're fully anticipating everything we're going to be showing you today, for example.
Thanks.
So with that, let me, uh, one more time again, and I know it's a repeat of a slide, but that's that yearly tonnage totals. And I'm so glad to hear, you know, to say, I, again, was very much looking forward to this work session today and the fact that we're all coming to accord as it pertains to out-of-county trash is a big deal. Um, so again, without kicking that dead horse anymore, review of tonnage trends, we're still on that track to continue to go up.
It's, uh, one quick second.
Yeah.
If we get, it's not on your slide, but if we go back to 2021.
Oh, yeah.
We were at a hundred and sixty thousand that year too.
Um.
And then it went down.
Go back to 21. Well, yeah, the COVID in there.
Yeah.
That was.
So 2021, we were in COVID and then it dipped down and then in 2020, end of 22, it started coming back up again to where we are.
So, um, I'm going to let Mr. Darrell Colar take over. This is a, uh, slide that shows GeoSentex former, this is on some of the slides that Mr. Illuminati was showing you as far as previous estimations on remaining capacity. Um, back of the napkin approach, that was literally a quote, um, uh, from one of their staff members when they were on, on, uh, retainer for us as an engineering firm without any over, um, excuse me, aerial survey. So, um, with that being said, this was a letter talking about in 2022 in September, which is not ancient history, uh, that you've got your, you know, post-bay grace revisions of 2021. Um, you had 2.996 million cubic yards. And if you're eating up around 270,000 cubic yards in a year's time of space, hey, no problem. You've got an estimated disposal of, as of July 2022, of 2.759 million cubic yards. Uh, Darrell, I'll let you, uh, go on from here, please, sir.
Um, thanks, Adam. So I'll say that I didn't dive into, um, the prior consultant's evaluation in too, too much detail, but I know in general, um, so you take the whole landfill footprint, all the cells, you got a portion of the landfill that's, that's capped. That's the, um, uncolored area to the, to the right there. That's, that is already capped and considered closed. Um, so the area of evaluation for remaining capacity is, um, the, the color coded, you know, the green and the red there. Um, so if you take that entire area and you do a comparison of the, what you have existing grades based on aerial topography and compare that to the permitted grades, what you can fill to with elevation, that's, that's the volume you get. You're going to get a, you know, 2 million or based, based on that. That's what my understanding is.
Yep.
Um, the, the concern with that approach is operations. Um, you know, you're going to go back in areas and you might have an area, uh, a few acres that you can put another foot or two. Um, operational wise, that's, that's, that's very challenging to get a road over there to, um, put in, fill here and there and stuff like that. It's, it, it's just challenging. Um, the other part is where they're filling right now is, um, eight, nine and, and part of 10. Uh, that the current location of the haul road that the, the haulers use to get to that. Um, we'll get to the point here, uh, in the near, you know, a few months or so, or I don't know what the timeframe is, is that, that handcuffs you to keep filling up. So, um, you know, we worked with, uh, Adam and the team and came up with a plan. We really need to redirect and come up with a different route for that haul road so we can fill over in the, the existing location and gain that airspace. So what we did is, um, basically for a short term, did evaluation of, of a more focused area. Okay. Operational wise, if within cell eight, nine and 10, if we relocate this access road, what volumes that gets you? And that's, that's the, the next slide, I think.
Get it off that screen. There it is. All right.
Um, so sure, based on that area, you know, it's based on filling up to those grades is a little over a year. Um, and that's, that's taking, uh, we've completed, uh, two aerials, one in, uh, last July, right?
Correct.
And then again, this, this March, you compared them. That was not a full year, but you take that and you, um, you make it relative. You do it over nine months and you calculate the tonnage over that period and compare it with the volume, give it, come with densities. Um, also, we knew, we wanted to do something sooner than an, on an annual basis because I saw the big uptick in the tonnage. Um, you know, because prior to that, prior to last June, we, we based on, on, you know, a 3% um, you know, annual escalation and this was closer to, to 10%. So that'll quickly eat into it. Um, so that is kind of where we are, meaning, okay, once we get to that point, then we have to come up with the, that's where we're working with Adam now and the team is that, okay, where else can we come up with a plan to, to fill and get, get this operation? It's just, um, it's to fill in the side slopes. It, one, to take equipment to do there, do it.
It's difficult.
And then you reopen your landfill, you can be, you know, leachate seeds and vegetation growth and just all their overall cover and stuff like that.
And that, and that's what we're fighting every day right now with our current operational status. And Darrell, if you wanted to put any finer points on it before we get to Q and A, I was going to move on to our current operational status. All right. So to, to just follow up on some of those points that, uh, Mr. Colar just made, as it pertains to filling areas of the landfill that still have permitted airspace, right? But how do you get it there? Um, if you'll bear with me, I do have a slide that has a video in it. This is drone footage that was just captured, um, by our operator this week. So it's a real current snapshot of where we stand and I'll narrate through this. Um, the Flight of the Valkyrie soundtrack did not load. I apologize. All right. So where we're currently sitting with the drone as we take off is what will be cell seven. And as we come up, we are flying over the southernmost facing tube faces and bench of cell eight, where you see the Caterpillar excavator sitting is just about the division line between cells eight and 10. line between cells eight and ten. Those structures up there you see that look like big, something that a giant would use for a soccer goal. Those are our bull fences. We actually utilize those on days of high wind to keep our trash from getting away from us when it's being dumped. I'm going to pause the video if I can do that right here. All right. So if you look to the left, and this is what Mr. Colar was just talking about, that's building that new rear haul road. So our crew has been working on that for a couple of months. It is slow going, as you can imagine. You know, you get a rain event like we did last night, it slows us down quite a bit because it's hard to get vehicles to it. But in that particular, and actually, we're loading there this morning, our dozer operator back there felt pretty confident. I checked on the on the traction, we're able to get so there's roll offs going back there right now as we speak. But if you see that area that's kind of brown, tan, that is area that was previously a saddle. That was that next piece of grade that was coming up to allow for proper surface water control. That saddle's being filled right now. So these are areas of the landfill that we're doing this on. We're taking advantage of where we have space to put waste in so we can get ahead of the clock as it pertains to cell seven. But as you go further and you get to the top of the landfill, right there at the very top, and that's only about eight feet, eight, eight and a half feet underneath our total permitted airspace. Yeah, that whole front face, you don't see any saddles in it. Let me see if I can get my mouse up here. This whole zone here is about a seven point two five acre piece that never got any saddles put in it because they were filled, which, okay, it was filled, they got to be taken out at some point once we get a horizontal expansion before we go to post closure. The other issue, and you'll actually see it over here, because that day that flyover that was done there by our GIS team, that's March of twenty twenty four, if you take a look at that, you see that whole front face? It's bare, completely bare. We were in violation with the State of Maryland, I walked on the site for a significant non-compliance item for no stabilization. So I talked before about one of the larger corrective action plan projects we took was to take a seven point five acre corrective action to get this thing greened up. And you'll see that top slice right there, we had that hundred degree week of temperatures, it kind of burned it. But the cool thing was the oats that we planted there had already come up, seeded, dropped their seed, and dried up after we got the rain last night, the past couple of days, starting to green up again. It's just kind of a cool sidebar, but these are the things we also have to take care of while we're actively operating a landfill is these extra over the top kind of projects. And that was pretty significant. And much, much appreciation to the Department of Corrections because those are inmate crew worked very hard on that along with our guys. So as you look there, the top, you've got our facility, pond, sea, stormwater sediment road control, and then the woods across the road, several of those parcels of land, and they're marked up here on this survey from our GIS department. We'll show you where that horizontal expansion is going to be taking place. Oops, that kind of went a little too fast, my fault. All right, either way, couple of drone photo captures. This is facing back towards the rear haul road in the bottom right hand corner. And again, you know, we talked about the fact that you've got other things that we have to deal with every day. The landfill is is very susceptible to weather patterns. If you see right here, that's an overnight rainfall causing rills to erode and uncover your trash from the previous night. This happens, this is something we deal with on a daily basis. So before you can start working here again, you got to go take care of those rills first. So it, you know, you're constantly doing this, and when you're only working in one open working face and all your equipment and all your crew is focused there, you can get a lot done. But from from now, give or take two or three months ago, until we get cell seven open, and even once we have it open, we're effectively splitting our crew in half, if not into thirds, almost every day of the week to to make sure that we're keeping up with what we need for our operations. So it's just kind of giving you a, and it's a lot easier to see when you're there, but just kind of tell you how intense our operations are right now. All right, so let's talk about cell seven because that's really what we need to get to. And I know Darrell has some comments on this as well as far as where we stand with finalization of the design and where we move forward with our conversations and permitting process with the state. So this is our current sixty percent, and this sixty percent plan includes our sump placement and the bottom of our cell of cell seven. As you can see, cell seven in the bottom left hand corner of your screen, that's Naylor Mill and Brick Hill Road. Cell seven is just slightly larger than cell eight, but they're pretty much, you know, sisters, they're they're pretty close as far as size is concerned. That's a current topographical map. And then when you start talking about the the placement of your sump, we, before we had a geotechnical work performed in that cell just a couple of weeks ago through a drilling firm to find out what our depths to, you know, overburden versus historic trash, rubble, anything like that, we did that. We came out first and we utilized our equipment and did some test pourings, or excuse me, I'm sorry, not test pourings, but test excavations. And based on that information, before we even had the well driller out there to perform the actual geotech work, we made a decision to change the floor layout of our sump. Your sump at the bottom of your cell is where you're going to lay that liner in and then allow all your leachate to be collected down to that lowest point in elevation. We changed it up based on the previous planned layout. And the reason we did it was if we were to go with the original sump placement, we're going to have a significant cut. But when you have a significant cut, that material's got to go somewhere. And I kind of liken it to this, it's not pulling one trash bag of trash out of a hole. It's pulling a trash bag of trash and a five gallon bucket of soil every time for every bag. So you're you're effectively doubling, if not tripling, the total volume of material that you have to take out of the ground. It's got to go somewhere. That means it's got to go up on cell eight, nine, or ten. We don't have room for it, so we've made a game plan to change that in the decision making, and we're going to go with a different sump placement that is not going to be as deep. That way, we don't get that much overburden and old historic trash. If anybody's ever seen it before, and this is just, again, I've got this up here as well, if anybody wants to look at it later, but you've got a layout of where we stand with the active fill area. And believe it or not, this is kind of the craziest part about this picture, and I, you know, I ask everybody to come look at it. The date on this is March of twenty twenty four. You see that, the black part in our active fill area? That's your rain bonnet. That means in March of twenty twenty four, there was that much space at the bottom of that cell that hadn't even seen a drop of trash yet. That's crazy that that thing filled up that fast. Unheard of. There's cell seven again, and then, of course, you can see across the street where the parcels are owned by the county with that turquoise color outlining them. That's where your horizontal expansion would occur. Good news is those game plans were already put in in order. So but again, like I've said before, regardless of cell seven, that is not our saving grace. We have to get across the road or expand otherwise. But that's what that layout would look like. There's your area that's already been surveyed out and your parcel lines would be on that left hand side of Brick Hill if you're going towards Naylor Mill. And conceptually, this is what the cell structure would look like with six large cells that are actually be broken down into, you know, a couple of smaller ones, but this is what it would look like in theory. In this particular plan, you do see that the horizontal expansion actually closes Brick Hill Road and joins up to cell seven and five on the other side. You know, one of the things I think we really need to have a conversation about is, you know, is it worth it from a cost standpoint? Can we do something different than this? We've got time to make that decision, but that decision needs to be made sooner than later so we can get our plans moving forward. And that's what me and Mr. Darrell and his team are talking about right now because if you close Brick Hill Road, you're talking about, you know, I can't remember what the estimate was for moving those power lines. It was ten to fourteen million just to move the power lines.
Oh, my God.
That's a lot of money. So we've got some other ways we can do this, but we need to make these decisions sooner than later. So just to recap real quick, this is kind of what we've been through right now, and I'm not going to go over this too much, we've been up here a while. But I think I hope this presentation gave you a little bit better idea of where we stand. And again, I, any day, please, everybody, I'd like anybody and everybody that wants to come see the landfill, please come. Just let me know I'm there every day. We can do it on Saturday and Sunday, too, especially on days when the fishing's bad and I'll be there. Folks, questions?
Yeah. How much, you know, our population in the county has not grown that much in the past ten years. So and I know we've had some large construction projects that's gone on that, you know, there was some demolition done. How much do you think when you tighten down on the out of county trash, how much tonnage do you think that's going to cut in, let's say, a month's time or a week or a year?
To put it simply, I'd like to see a twenty five or more percent decrease in annual tonnage. So if annual tonnage is one sixty five and we can cut out a three months' worth of it quickly, and then on the heels of that in January one with the tipping fee increase, now again, you're if you if you codified, it's a prohibition, the tipping fee increases as far as a diversion is no longer, you know, what's that matter? It's going to get it, they're going to stop when you say it's prohibited. Only time will tell. I'm really hoping to see a precipitous drop right off the bat.
So you you think there's probably twenty five percent more trash right now coming into the landfill?
It could be as high as that. It could be as high as that.
Really?
Yeah. Not twenty five percent of total tonnage. Not twenty five percent of total tonnage.
What do you think will be cut out?
Somewhere between eight and fifteen percent.
Knockout out of county.
Yep, that's my estimate.
You know, I don't think the tipping fee is going to be a big deterrent because I think the other counties are going to step up and raise theirs along with it. They might be some, but you know.
Maybe. I will say anecdotally, I've spoken to our neighbors around, you know, without naming any names, they've seen some increased traffic since we've been having these conversations from certain haulers, which I'm glad to hear of. But only time and data collection is going to tell us for sure. Every truck that comes across that scale is weighed, so we've got that every day. Monthly tonnage reports, weekly tonnage reports, and then obviously quarterly and annually. The other thing that's going to show us truth positive one way or the other is aerial survey. I've already ordered one for December. I think that's probably an appropriate timeline because once, you know, tipping fee, again, we we've talked about that, and again, that was a decision before we talked about the codification, but I think we're going to be in in better shape having that data in December going into construction phases for cell seven. But I say my hope is to see a precipitous drop.
How are you going to handle, say, a contractor that's doing a roof that's from Delaware, but he does the roof in Maryland in Wycomico County and he crosses the scales in a Delaware truck?
So almost every truck that comes in from some of our major haulers have a Delaware Solid Waste Authority permit right on the side of their truck, right? And we and they have us Wycomico one, too. Your demolition material is is much, much harder to track. Your demolition material doesn't have a whole lot of identifiers on it. It's your municipal solid waste.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But how are you going to control that?
Well.
Or can you?
We were going to ask our haulers to be judicious, like Mr. Illuminati said. They know that the threat is out there with codification, that if you violate this, there are, you know, penalties to it, suspension, revocation of access to the site altogether. You know, we're going to have some people out there taking a look. I mean, I can't tell you how many folks, I got a guy that works at Conley Mill every day. He'll go get his lunch sometime at the Hardee's there online before we get to Lion Road and will tell me how many trucks he sees coming across that Delaware line and give me the number over the radio. Sure enough, twenty five minutes later, that thing's at our scale. Am I going to catch them all like that? No. Your municipal solid waste haulers, you're going to see the proof positive in the in the material when it's dumped. And we don't have the time nor the manpower to have someone sit up there all day, every day and check every piece of trash. Frankly, it's not safe. But I think we we know enough of them, we we see enough of it, the drivers are aware. We literally had a driver ask our operations supervisor the other day, does this mean I'm going to have to start taking this to Worcester County? They know, you know what I mean? So I'm hoping in it, I'm hoping this makes a difference, really, truly.
It's going to be an eight to ten percent reduction.
I'm hope I would like to see as high as fifteen percent reduction in overall tonnage.
Really quick to follow up on two points as a point of clarification because I didn't know until Adam taught me, not that I'm assuming you don't know it, but municipal solid waste does not mean municipality in the sense of city of Salisbury, city of Fruitland. It just means non-construction waste, so.
Residential waste.
Residential. And then to follow up on Councilmember Holloway's point, the fee is not a deterrent because if they, we don't want them taking Wycomico trash to Worcester County or Somerset County, then the fee becomes, as Councilmember Ennis said, the actual cost of the operation of the landfill and the long term economic sustainability and operation that Charles talked about to begin. So setting the fiscal year twenty seven tipping rate, if the decrease of eight up to fifteen percent is seen, that is going to fuck the bottom line. And so I, next year may be the last time that there's a request for a significant increase because, A, we're now losing eight to fifteen percent that is not coming in from out of county waste, but also to do that analysis that Councilmember Ennis talked about, which is what are the actual costs and how do we become operationally successful so we're not bonding twenty years for a cell that we're using for three to four years? Ideally, we're going to get that cell life up because of the out of county waste restriction. But that's a conversation for March of next year.
Dave, we all want to be a hundred percent sure. I want to be a hundred percent sure that out of county waste is the the actual issue. We don't want.
Time's the issue.
Pardon?
Time's the issue.
Well, yes, it is.
But out of county waste is something we can absolutely control.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, we're not sitting here this time next year, we can be a hundred percent sure this is this is the problem. But coupled with that, and piggybacking on what Joe was asking, the spike that you showed in twenty four, it's hard for me to understand, or maybe you have some 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 background reasons why would, if that was out of county haulers coming in or out of county trash coming in, was there something that changed their behavior to all of a sudden in twenty four? And likewise, Mr. Merritt pointed out back in, was it two thousand or twenty twenty?
Twenty one.
Twenty one. We had a spike then, you know, and it's probably very difficult to get to the bottom of what that was, but can we can we connect those dots enough to say that that spike, you know, it's hard for me to believe they would have changed their habits one year just for for no for no particular reason.
There has been out of county trash coming into that landfill for a long time.
That's what I would have thought.
I mean, it it the spikes, there's parts of it that are truly anomalies. There's parts of it that are trends and habits of the haulers. I can't put my finger on exactly which one. The only thing I can tell you is the one thing we can control through codification is saying we're not taking it from out of this county, like most every other landfill around us does. There's there's economic factors, there's, you know, the housing market factors that go into trash trends, you know, but if it's it's a steady increase, you've had other neighboring landfills raise rates where we stayed stagnant, you know, I think it's a combination of things. There's no there's no smoking gun.
Well, and, you know, to absolutely identify and tie that that trash to to a hauler, I I think is going to be a little bit difficult. Of course, you can identify that it came off of that truck.
Yeah.
And then you have to talk about what control that they have on on that. And you said it a while ago, your ability to.
Yeah.
I don't know how many trucks a day, seventy five, a hundred, you know, that somebody's going to be having to check. And then beyond that is the enforceability.
Correct.
And I think that the if there's an appeal, correct me if I'm wrong, is it is it the local county appeals board it goes to?
If there is an addition of an administrative penalty, then it would go to the Board of Appeals because that would be a determination of an official within the county.
So my question would be, is that going to be defendable? Are you going to be able to, you know, if I were the the hauler and I was incriminated with this and I could account for a variety of reasons that some of somebody else's, I'm not saying that, you know, that there, I'm sure there is, there is a good amount, but when you get down to actually defending that, it sounds like it's going to be a slippery slope, no pun intended.
Well, I think, A, the department's going to not have time to go through an entire load to find one piece from Ocean Pines. When it gets dumped, they're going to be able to just do a cursory look and see what's there. And again, from a route standpoint, if you start far away and work your way towards the landfill, what's at top after the dump is going to be what's farthest away from the county. So if right out the gate, when it dumps out, you go back to the slide photos from earlier and you see not just one Princess Anne, but lots of Princess Anne, lots of Ocean Pines, lots of out of county Delaware, Selbyville, things of that nature, then you take pictures, that's the basis for it. And then when you get before the board, as you know, the board's logical, you sat on the board for many years, they're going to look at it, Adam's expertise, he's going to be a witness, he's going to be the one, here's what I saw, here are the pictures. And then they can present a defense. That's the country we live in, but.
And video, I mean, when we implement, depending on how this legislation looks, and we implement a standard operating procedure based on that legislation, it would look something like, you know, this is your. it would look something like, you know, this is your, the random number of vehicles you're gonna select today, at what time intervals? When that vehicle comes across the scale, scale house, what is your route? All right? What is your, what is your waste source today? All in-county trash is what I wanna hear. All right? Gets 17 calls to the Hill, the Hill has truck number 101. As they come, operations supervisor is videoing that truck come up, getting its numbers, watching it dump its material, performing the, um, performing the, the pick through, and then we're calling back down to the, uh, the scales to get the VIR in. And that's what it would look like. So you would have video evidence, camera evidence, and then again, like Andrew said, if there was an appeal, you know, we go, everybody's get their day in court, I guess.
And it's in their interest. If you, if out-of-county waste comes in, Leinfield Justice is gonna run out of space, and then it's gonna be closed. That's it, and then they're gonna have to go somewhere else. And so I forget which of my ESOPs fables this is, but I'll pick it and apply it, and, uh, that's where they are. And so.
Got a question, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, it looks like one of these things is something we can't control, which is the location of our landfill in relation to all the other ones we're.
Centrally located.
Right smack in the middle. Um, do we have a timeline on cell seven? I know we're expediting everything. Is it permitted?
So.
It is, where, where are we at on?
We'll let Darrell tell you where you, where we stand right here today with design. The, the, the cell itself is already in effect permitted as part of our overall landfill permit.
Right.
Now we're looking at construction permitting, the actual construction permitting for seven. So.
I wanna get to that too, but I had one quick question, and that is, we've been uncovering as many rocks as we can to find out the solution. Have we evaluated the, the closing of the recycling centers and how those, those closings could possibly have increased the tonnage at the landfill?
Honestly, I have not done a deep dive into see how a recycling center being closed would have affected the timeline of the landfill. For me, from a standpoint of waste acceptance, it, it just, it on paper doesn't make sense that that would automatically make you have an increase in waste.
Uh, cause I, I don't know, I don't know at all.
I don't think so.
There's more than one center that closed.
Those two.
They were, yeah, they were used quite a bit.
Sure.
I don't know how much tonnage.
I mean, if it.
Don't you know how much tonnage was being removed from that?
Recycling? Sure, and our MRA numbers continue to go up.
But I mean, if you were to look at the tonnage of the recycling that was being removed from, let's say, just Pacific Center alone.
Did you see tonnage increases at other recycling centers around them? This would be the question.
That's what I'm saying, how much tonnage was originally gonna be there? And, and if it's only 50%, then what would the number be of tonnage that, let's say, was not going into the recycling but went to the landfill?
So.
Randomly say 50%.
I don't, I don't wanna say anything randomly, and I certainly don't mind doing a deeper dive once we get through some of these bigger hoops.
Yeah.
But that is the, really honestly, no offense, a kinda low on the list of priorities, given everything we have.
Yeah. I'm a novice, I have no.
I know, the recycling center, the recycling center at, for example, the, the, um, uh, Extension Office, the Newland Park Convenience Center is within walking distance. The idea that somebody that's taken the time to recycle their material is just gonna go, nah, I'm not going another mile to take it, I'll throw it out on the road, or just dump it in the trash? I don't know, I don't buy that.
I did.
Yeah. I don't believe that either.
That's what our family did.
What, you just stopped recycling it altogether? Well, you know, and here was the other thing, I remember this before I ever came to the county, ever thought about coming to the county years ago, was this, there was this common rumor floating around the county of, we're not doing any recycling anyway, so why, why bother? I still get that question from members of the public.
Right.
Like, you're really not recycling anymore, you guys, I see you dumping on the hill every day.
Well, plastic isn't recyclable.
Partly, certainly, and we, and we don't have much of a market for it. And, but still, all of our plastic bins, they're going in that plastic room and being bailed. You know, waiting on the day that we can possibly do something, but one I get a lot is cardboard. You know, cardboard trucks being dumped on the hill. I'll tell you, your large appliance companies in this county, you know, not to name any names, but the ones that are handling 50, 60 washer and dryers, air conditioners, and, uh, refrigerators a day, that's a ton of cardboard going on the hill. I can't force them to recycle, just because they won't take one piece of plastic out of that recycling, or take the foam out of it, for example. I don't mind doing a deeper dive into seeing whether or not recycling trends as far as tonnage across the scales changed as far as those two recycling centers are concerned.
I don't really need an answer, I was just curious as to whether we had, we had.
Understood. No, we have not.
Mr. Colar, you, um. You're on deck.
Right. Uh, so we are currently, am I on? Um, wrapping up the 90% design, um, looking to get that to, uh, the county. And, um, I would say between 90% and get their comments, and 100% about 60 days before we're, we get it to MDE. Like Adam said, it's, it's a permitted cell. We're, we're not going to MDE get, get a permit. Um, but we have to present the construction drawings to MDE for them to approve the, the construction drawings. I mean, they're gonna look at the actual details of the liner and stuff like that. Um, we did some preemptive work with MDE. Um, we set up a meeting with them and just went over our schedule and said, you know, how can we work with the state to, um, get this, you know, um, on your radar, um, set something ahead and stuff like that? Now, they will not commit, didn't expect them to commit, but what they did say, you know, when you're near that, uh, completion date of your, which we're getting close, um, tell us, give that date of an actual settlement. Then give us 30 days and we'll schedule a meeting, um, and then we'll go over our comments with you. Which, um, we hope that's the case, because that is, that is a significant help, because I think in their code, they state, was it 90 days?
Up to 90 days for review.
They have, um, and I've seen them take it, and I've seen them take it more. And I've seen them get to 90 days and say, sorry, we need another 60. Um, so we're trying to get ahead of that. Um, we've had, uh, MDE, they come out on site.
Mm-hmm.
Couple weeks ago.
Big crew.
And, oh, during that meeting, uh, their big concern, not concern, um, big item was stormwater management. They know that sub, uh, cell seven is, you know, uh, received for the stormwater management, or stormwater, and, and they're like, you have to manage that first, you know? Matt, take care of that, and then get your stormwater under control, because you can do that independently of your, uh, cell approval. Um, so we worked with the, the county, they drained it, they came out, uh, they were very pleased. Um, you know, MDE quoted, you know, very happy to see what, what you did with this, and getting ahead of the stormwater. Um, now we're in a good some months to do that. So we're also working with a plan with the county to, um, separate, or consider separate the stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead and get that out, because we need to make some modifications to a stormwater pond outside of cell seven.
Just a point of clarification, when, when Darrell says separate the stormwater, effectively taking the stormwater project and the construction of said, out of the bid package for a contractor that'll be handling the entire cell construction. So getting ahead of the game there as well, saving time.
Wasn't the stormwater partially done already because of its relationship to the cell next to it?
Yeah, but when you, what happens is, when you, when you close off the haul road, like we will with the current haul road eventually, and then you start building cell seven, which has been acting as a temporary stormwater management feature for cells eight, nine, and 10, you've gotta redirect it somewhere else. So we're, that's why we gotta, it's not reinventing the wheel whatsoever, it's, it's known that you would have to do it, um, we're just, again, we're taking the time to do that now. Yeah.
Yeah, outside of the, um, the landfill cell, cell seven, outside the berm, there's a, um, it's overgrown, there's a, um, uh, stormwater management pond there, and then eventually gets across the road. So, yeah, we gotta shape that up, look at the, uh, the outfall structure, and, um, get that going ahead of this while we, you know, get that under construction.
Yeah. Interesting, I mean, and again, going back to the intensity of, of operations on a weekly and daily basis, on Sunday, myself and six of the other crew, we met on, you know, because Sunday the landfill's closed, we closed the haul road to our own traffic, uh, after lunchtime, when those guys were done running the routes, and put in a stormwater diversion feature in preparation for cell seven. That was in-house design, in-house material, in-house labor. But you might as well do it now, because as, you know, as soon as, as soon as we get the go-ahead, you know, we gotta move.
Um, right, so that's, we're hoping to be, you know, bid documents, bid out the bid, you know, beginning of next year, um, that's gonna depend on MDE and, and the feedback, and how much they, they work with us.
Thank you. So you're close, you're close to 90% design, you're gonna be wrapping up, and then shortly thereafter, 100%? I mean, what is the, the timeline? I know it's, it's kind of putting you on the spot, but, uh.
Fair enough. Um, I would say about 60 days from now to, to wrap up the, the 90%, work with the county, the comments, and get the 100% and, and get it ready for MDE submission.
Gotcha.
Um, we, we're also trying to work with, uh, the county as, and, um, because they have a, a survey that they're using, so they're going out and help us out. Um, and we had to go to them, get, get out there a little bit, so that, you know, um, had to get some more information, that, that's what we're getting through right now. That's why I'm a little, our stormwater management and, uh, separating that, I think, can help us, you know, with the schedule a little bit.
I, I think something else for the future, I, I don't know, and I'm just gonna throw this out there as a, as a point that maybe we can talk about some years down the road, as a, as a potential that would be for all of the Department of Public Works is actually having ser- surveyors on staff would be a big help. You know what I mean? Surveyors are super busy, and you give them a call, and you're like, hey, man, I need one more piece located, and we've got some survey equipment at the landfill, but, you know, we don't have any surveyors on staff. So it'd be a big help, maybe sometime in the future.
Um, Mr. Ennis was talking about enforcement. Don't get real optimistic on that, about getting anything done. And I'm gonna relate to something I've been going through for the past week. Somebody started a landfill, illegal landfill on the east side of Waukesha County. I've been, I've probably sent out a dozen, 15 emails. The only action I've got off the other side of the government is from Mr. Illuminati, and of course, Mr. Benson, in these emails. And Sheriff's Department won't do anything, they say they can't do anything, when clearly there's a, a state law limiting or prohibiting that from happening. Nobody wants to do anything. So don't get too optimistic about if you go finding trash from Delaware, somebody's gonna enforce it.
Well, I, I do think that we will be able to enforce it in-house, right? And with the help of the Law Department, I, I don't know if that's different than what.
In-house too, I mean.
I, I understand, yeah.
I've been calling for a week about this, you know?
I mean, if there's, if there's anything I can do to assist with that particular issue you're dealing with, as far as the solid waste issue, I'm certainly happy to help. Um, you know, I, yeah. Refuge, dumping outside and creating something like that is a problem, um.
This, this isn't just dumping a few, this is tons of trash.
Okay.
Okay. How many tons?
Yeah. I mean, if it's, listen, if it's large enough, you know, Maryland Department of Environment does have an ECU, an environmental crimes unit, um, if it's, if it's.
Maybe you need to send me that number.
I can certainly do so, um. You know, if, because there, there was an illegal dump out there that the state is still trying to finish up with, uh, out towards San Domingo, I believe it was, a couple of years back. And it was large enough the state took, took action, yeah.
So I guess just, well, first of all, acknowledge that, that, you know, the, I mean, the, the big thing that made the news, uh, last week was, um, you know, three weeks, or three, uh.
Gee, many Christmas. All right, and this is a vehicle that was there and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Unbelievable. Um, yeah.
But, but, we got it.
Yes, sir.
You guys can talk.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate your attention to it.
But yeah, so, so I say, first of all, last week, uh, you know, uh, the big thing that made the news was, uh, you know, three blocks from my house, uh, on Monticello Avenue, um, Route 13, you're gonna have a new Chick-fil-A, um, you know, uh, Chick-fil-A doesn't wash a single dish, right? And they have a steady bunch of business coming up, so all of that, their business model is built on trash, just acknowledging that, that is markedly different than Market Street Inn, you know, for River, you name all these local restaurants. So the more that we allow those folks in, you know, so things like that, of course, always are gonna upset me a little bit, and same thing with big box stores not recycling just because, hey, it would cost them an extra penny, you know? But I guess the core of what I'm trying to figure out and understanding here is, at least for, when it comes to legislation, the, the main things that I guess, if I'm understanding right, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but just the understanding, the main things that we need to, to have within legislation is simply, you know, number one, no foreign solid waste. Two, there's a fine for any illegal dumping or, uh, of any potential, uh, you know, or potential suspension, if there's any extra foreign waste coming in. Three, the executive branch or the, the sheriff's office, whomever the right folks are, have the authority to issue a fine or administer the suspension. And then four, that it becomes effective on a certain date. Uh, and then hopefully, within that, we have one giant sign, or maybe 15 giant signs, whatever it takes to make sure that anyone who was coming to put their trash in our county knows, turn around if you're from elsewhere. So I guess, uh, what am I missing here? What else do we need to consider or anything as far as when it comes to preparing for legislation? And when we bring that about?
Take us right to our next item, and that would be with Mr. Illuminati.
Correct.
Mr. Mr. Colar, are you, are you finished?
I am, thank you.
I thought you were okay. So, um, we wanna go through this legislative bill?
Before Mr. Illuminati, just to put it in context, um, three weeks ago, um, Ms. Hurley and I were asked to prepare emergency legislation, which is what's in the briefbook. Um, and the emergency legislation was, uh, has some definitional sections. The definitional section changes largely relate to, um, defining out-of-county, uh, solid waste. But it also is, there was a discussion previously about brush and, 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 uh, violations with haulers improperly disposing of trumps, tree stumps and stuff, and that's in there. Um, then there was a, the, the issue of, uh, out-of-county solid waste. And at that, at the time this was drafted, the idea was that there would be a surcharge on out-of-county solid waste. Um, uh, and it establishes, it codifies the, uh, operation of Newland Park landfill and the recycling areas, the locations, the times, uh, so they would be codified, um, and the, uh, can only be changed by amending the, the, um, code. Um, and then there's a penalty provision in here. At the direction of the council, I met with Mr. Illuminati, um, last week, um, to, to review this. Um, and as a result of that, Mr. Illuminati drafted, uh, proposed changes, um, that he's, to this, the fundamental change would be not to have a surcharge, but to simply say that there's not gonna be any, any out-of-county solid waste. My understanding is that the council is generally receptive to that. Um, the other provision in here that I'll, Mr. Illuminati can explain is the penalty provisions and what the appellate process is, so.
And I think there, because there's been a lot of conversations back and forth over the last couple of weeks, and I think that the council, some members of the council are looking to adjust the penalty, um, parameters, so that'll come into play as well. But, um, thank you, Mr. Benson. I think if we try to go from, it's only nine pages, so if we can go in, in chronological order, Mr. Illuminati, based on what has been highlighted as the changes in this text, is that okay with you?
So, chapter 156 already exists, uh, it's called Garbage, Rubbish, and Refuge, and it's broken into two articles. One governs unlawful disposer, disposal, and article two governs household refuse permits. Uh, what the proposed amendments will do is add a third article, which will govern the, uh, hours of operation of the landfill. So article one is currently enacted is really about roadside trash. The proposed amendments are gonna expand that fully, and what was originally drafted by the council's attorney, uh, was to expand it to allow for out-of-county waste. So there's the changes to 156.2 that are in the legislative bill to improve the definitions, or to modify the definitions, there's no suggested amendments at this time there, though at, in the future, uh, there probably would be some suggested edits. As to 156.3, there was an addition of a subsection B, C, and D. The first proposed amendment is to strike D in full, and to strike the provision in B that allows for outside solid waste. 156.4 does not appear in the original legislative bill. That is what governs the presumption of responsibility for violations. So by simply tweaking that portion, uh, of striking, like, it refers to contractor now that we're gonna specifically say commercial hauler, because a commercial hauler has a definition now, there's a slight tweak in subsection D of 156.4, and a tweak in 156.4C, uh, because we're not like too, unless otherwise ascertaining, which we're gonna be able to otherwise ascertain the generator of the litter, garbage, or refuge, because it's gonna be coming off of the. the generator of the litter, garbage or refuge, because it's going to be coming off of the commercial hauler. So then we amend the penalty section, which is currently governed by 156 five.
Sir Illuminati, on the, on 156 four C, there were two different versions there. One had the until the garbage, rubbish or refuse is disposed of in a lawful manner. That was in, remained in the document. But another, uh, communication suggested that those, the end of that sentence be removed. Which is it?
I amended to include the striking of until the garbage, rubbish or refuse is disposed of.
Okay, thanks.
So in 156 five, we're rewriting the violations and penalties. Uh, we're rewriting, striking section A in full, rewriting section A to say, any person or a commercial hauler who shall violate a provision of this article shall be guilty of a civil infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000. The director of the Department of Public Works or his designee is hereby authorized to issue citations for the civil infractions of this article. And then B, an administrative penalty. And this will apply to both persons and commercial haulers.
Ask you a question?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so the punishable by fine of not more than $1,000. Will that, um, conflict with provisions we may be putting in further down on the three-step process?
No, because I believe the three-step process is going to govern is the administrative part. So breaking it into two separate groups, the fine and the penalty, that's for the actual infraction. We have to go to court to prove municipal infractions. But the administrative penalty could be done without issuing a citation. Because at the administrative penalty phase, we don't need to prove it at the higher standard for a civil infraction. It's just the interpretation of the director of public works. And then there's the appellate process through the Board of Appeals.
Okay. The others, the other question I have is, uh, right next to it, you say the director of the Department of Public Works or his designee is hereby authorized. We don't have a director of Department of Public Works. Are you suggesting that that might be the director of Department of Public Works? Or, I mean, the, the deputy director is not really his designee. Are, are you just going to say that we have to assume the deputy director will be assuming the role of the director?
We can assume it. There can be a memo from the executive designating who the person is who's in charge of this. There might be a point in time, not advocating for it, where there's a specific position that does this. Where the item says, this is the person today who, or there becomes a point in time where we designate a specific person. That's how it's written for every other part of the code. So for example, in the zoning section to issue nuisance violations, it's the director of the department or the designee. Because we're not getting into naming specific employees or even titles of employees, because that can change. So it's just a memorandum to the department of, this is the person who is my designee. So that when we have to go to court, we can say on the, that person can be sworn in under oath and say, I'm the designee for the director as to this enforcement provision.
Do you feel that's, we're covered? It's okay?
Okay. I know, I, yeah. So when we go four years, I'm just making sure I understand this right. We go four years without a department, director of public works? Who is, who determines the designee? Do we need to spell that out? You're just saying the department?
That's been on an as needed basis, depending on which roles are filled. At this time, I would say Mr. Corey would be the designee. It's his area of expertise. He's the one who has ushered through this plan, who has testified before you that.
So you say the, or designee is good enough for the, I mean, I mean, should we spell out the county executive or somebody else to determine the designee?
A deal, like we're writing this not from the current standpoint, but from the, ideally, we're going to have a director of public works that.
Great ideal, but it doesn't happen in reality.
Designee then comes from the county executive in, through that process.
Okay.
And again, the goal here is not ticky tack violations. The goal is that the haulers understand that there is a point in the future where, and that we all understand. I mean, I was expecting to come from you at some point about increasing recycling, increasing compost, limit the overall amount of trash one each family creates, because this is a group effort to reduce the amount of tonnage going to the landfill on a regular basis. But to the extent that we may have violators, then the first infraction would be a complete bar for 30 days. The second fraction for 180 days. And for the third offense in a two-year period, uh, complete prohibition from utilizing any solid waste facility. If council, but those are just what I've worked on with Mr. Benson. If council believes they're too stringent or they're not stringent enough, that's fine. But 30 days excluding Sundays and any day the landfill is closed due to a holiday is pretty substantial when we were originally just talking about the need to close just on Sundays to be able to be, or Saturdays to be a deterrent, then on Mondays to be a deterrent. And, uh, this is block, a complete blocking of a commercial hauler or any other person who brings out of county waste to a solid waste facility for 30 days. And to a degree, there's already with the permit holders, there is an implementation process where their permits get pulled or they get told they can't come for a period of time because they're not adhering to the rules and regulations of their permit. This is a stepped up approach with, we'd like to believe that a hauler, owner of a hauling operation does not want to, uh, be banned for any period of time. We also know that one of the great things that the liquor control board does is they do a public service announcement of, here are the restaurants and violators who are serving underage alcohol. Do not patronize these individuals if you do not want to support restaurants and bars that serve underage alcohols. Well, when somebody gets a violation, put them on notice. This hauler got a violation and now for 30 days cannot use the facility. Encourage citizens. Do not patronize haulers. There may be some haulers who go, cool, we can, we can eat 30 days. It's not going to be till that second offense and they're going to play that gamble of how long until I get caught? Again, this all has to be a united effort to extend the life until the construction of the next cell. So I don't ever want to actually see somebody get violated, because the hope is that the individual haulers and the persons are going to not bring it in. Nobody wants to go through this administrative process at all.
I agree a hundred percent, Dave.
We're all trying to get to the same place and I'm going to throw out some of my initial thoughts about the penalties. And agreed, it needs to be a very strong message. Uh, in fact, I would imagine that, uh, those who are watching PAC 14 who are haulers are probably already making their plans to, uh, shut this down. And that would be the best of all worlds. I'm concerned about unintentional consequences. And right out of the gates, and I know you're just tabling this, Mr. Illuminati, but right out of the gates with a 30-day administrative ban, because what happens to, and I'm, I'm just playing with some numbers here, how many, uh, households there are? And if there's three haulers dividing the math, so somewhere between nine, 10,000 people, residents would be without service. I think that would be one consequence. I'm not sure whether we would know exactly how to, to, to deal with that. It's not necessarily our problem, but I think we need to think about that before we move forward. And likewise, I've got a pretty good feeling and I've done a little bit of talking. I think that would practically bankrupt or put them out of business. I don't know that for a fact, but I think there's, it's a good possibility. So pretty, pretty stringent. I think the thousand dollars probably is meaningless. And where I'm headed, now you've made it complicated for me because of the administrative versus civil infraction. I get that. Uh, in my world, I would say right out of the gates, and I'm just going to throw numbers out, perhaps 5,000 on the first incident, perhaps 10,000. And then go up incrementally by 5,000 for maybe two or maybe three infractions. Maybe the third one is where we put the 30-day ban. But, uh, I'm really, uh, trying to be careful that we don't get ourselves into a situation where unintended consequences and we're dealing with a, a much larger problem. And, um, I think Mr. Holloway said something about how New York City had trash piling up. I mean, you know, you.
Oh, it's Philly.
Yeah, the outfall of this could be. So I'm just tabling that for, for discussion and to think about how we can fashion this and get it right so that we can, it's something we can all live with and not put ourselves in a bad position.
What do you think your recommendation would be, Dave, as far as a first offense, a second offense and a third offense? Something specific that we have tangible?
So really quick monetarily, state law limits the maximum to a thousand dollar fine.
I was afraid of that. I didn't know.
So that's where, and so what the ultimate goal was, was before this legislation was drafted, Mr. Corey and I were working on a bill to ideally have brought today. Uh, but now we have to retrofit it to have regulations just for commercial haulers. Because if we have a permitting process like we do for household waste, but for commercial haulers, that exists in Delaware and in a lot of other places throughout the state of Maryland, in charter counties, that when you violate the terms of the agreement, then we can have separate, because then it's a privilege to have the permit to be operating in Wycomico County for Wycomico County residents. Then it's not about really the dumping penalty. Then it's about in our own infraction penalty through the permitting process, where we could have those higher fines uh, as a result. But we're not able to put that together because that's really complicated. And so this is where we are now. If council believes the first offense should be five days, second offense, 15 days, third offense. If 30 days is the killer, make the third offense 30 days. Ideally, what's going to happen is, and I think this is something from an economic standpoint, there's probably entities doing business in Wycomico County that will stop doing business in Wycomico County, because originally it made sense, oh, I'll pick up these homes on the way to the landfill from out of state. And now it doesn't make sense for them to send their truck from a separate area to come into the county, which would actually increase our local, the opportunity for our local, uh, based haulers to grow their business. And so there's not a simple solution. This is the solution until cell seven. Uh, if we want, if there is a council consensus, again, these numbers were just worked on with the understanding council may modify. But the reason for the necessary is punishment. And I, I don't think 30 days is extreme. I haven't talked to a hauler. But as a deterrent factor is if cell seven gets full, then no one's coming to the landfill.
I'm coupling this with my previous questions about how, uh, how well we can absolutely identify and make the connection, uh, to a hauler. Because I think the, the consequences, especially if it were the 30 days, I'm, I'm trying to think about the, the lesser days, whether that, we definitely want teeth and it, it needs to be, it needs to, to send a definite message. But if, if you're not abs, if you can't absolutely be sure, and I, I've got a feeling that Mr. Corey's got a way to do something close to that. But, uh, you know, I certainly want, would not want there to be a process that's somewhat arbitrary. And all of a sudden they're losing, you know, even five days is a economic hardship.
I agree with you, Dave. I mean, we have talked to haulers and five days, it could put them out of business. 30 days is definitely going to put them out of business. And I, and your point's well taken as far as what does happen to the people who are being serviced by that particular hauler. Where, where do they go? So, um, in light of the fact that the, I guess, we're going to have to stay in line with the penalties. What was your, what is your thoughts on the penalty, on the penalty phase in reference to prohibition?
If we could do that, uh, and I, I do understand what you said that the obstacle is. But I, I was just going to throw out 5,000 first, 10,000 second, 15,000 third and fourth. Uh, perhaps that's when the ban goes.
So you wouldn't have a ban? You're saying that you would not implement a ban on the first three penalties?
Yeah. But I, I, I could give on part of that. Maybe the third, maybe the fourth, you know? Certainly if they're repeating, it makes it, makes the, the penalty go up. But the constant, the ultimate consequences are what bother me, both for the residents and for a hauler that's going to basically lose their entire livelihood. A company is going to go out of business. And I don't think the other, other companies have the wherewithal, the equipment, whatever the case, to step in and, and take their place. That's just not going to happen. They're just not going to be able to do that. So it's.
Something gets there?
Yeah. It's a, it's a major, major consequence that we're talking about. And so it's a struggle to figure this out.
And we want to, I think we want to make sure that whatever we put in place is not selectively enforced. It's enforced equally as opposed to one company being enforced more than the other.
Are we prohibited by state law? Is it, wait, I'm trying to understand or let me back up.
State law caps the maximum that a civil infraction can be, can be a thousand dollar fine.
However, if we had a permitting or a, a, a permit, a hauler permit or something like that, a commercial hauler permit, then you, within that context, you could, we could exercise.
That's something that we would explore.
Yeah. And the, the only thing I would say to that, and I, and I think it's important. I think we should go that direction in the future. I truly don't know that we can have anything like that come into play in enough time to make a difference. That's the only issue I would see with that. Like if you want to put together a full licensure code, if you will, a permitting code like Delaware has, which is great. I mean, they got a great model and I can share that information out with you as well. Uh, it's right on, it's actually right on their website. It's, it's in depth. It's in depth. And it would, you'd have to give, you probably need to give 16 to 90 days notice before you put the permitting process into implementation, because now you're, I mean, I don't know, how long do you think it would take? Once you developed it, approved it?
That's going to be, yeah, that's going to take.
It would. I'm afraid.
The time that we have perhaps, but.
And that's phase two is to bring a solid plan for regulating commercial haulers with those additional. And so I agree, a thousand dollars isn't going to stop somebody. And, uh, and this is where, you know, again, this is, this affects everybody throughout the entire county. And so if you want to tailor the days a little differently, but they know where their routes are going. And they also have to impart onto their residents, it's important that, you know, you not accept out, out of county waste.
Just a general comment, you know, the, the haulers, like it or not, are part of our system.
Absolutely.
Part of the entire system and we're, we're, we're tied at the hip. So, uh, I don't want anyone in the haulers to think that they are enemy number one. And to tell you the truth, I, my gut feeling is that they're going to self-enforce. If they're watching PAC 14 today or they're going to be very attuned to this, they may have already. We can't count on that, but I, I, I think that they will, they will, they will get in line with this, this aspect.
I think we need some input here very quickly. This is going on too long. We've got 30 days. We've got two years. Then we have a complete prohibition. The council members have to have some thoughts in talking to the haulers as to what is a more equitable means by which to enforce this.
All right. Were we talking to the haulers about what kind of fines we're going to give them? I mean, I don't, I think that's a.
Well, the issue is making sure that we enforce it. And you'd be very surprised. Some of the haulers are, are quite acceptable. They really want to see something done. They want to see the violators penalized. But in the same sense, they don't want something to occur that's going to destroy their own business.
I understand that.
30 days for a first offense will put a hauler out of business. So in our experiences, having the opportunity of met with these people, because I think we all have, we need, we need a solution as what these three fines.
I had, I had a conversation with somebody that talked to a driver from one of the hauling companies. He said, we absolutely do not pick up anything out of the county and bring to the landfill. And this is one of the major haulers. He said, our route stops at the county line. And I know that, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I was told. He says, we do not take anything from out of the county to this landfill. Now that's one hauler. Now we've got a, a number of haulers. And I guess my question is, these permits that you have, commercial hauling permits, the numbers on the trucks, right?
Yeah. It's pretty much just that all that does is identify to the scale house that they have an account.
Does that cost them anything?
It's, it's an, they have to open an account. They have to show us a surety bond.
Okay.
To have, to have a line of credit. It's effectively what it is. It's not a permit like we're talking about Delaware has. Yep.
Then they don't have to pay every day in other words?
No, they, they get billed.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that's what they're for. But, um, I, I'm going to agree with Dave and, and John about this. We can't, the, the big, the person's, not only the company may suffer if we knock them out for 30 days. You know, you're going to have all these cans sitting around the county that other haulers may not be able to service. And people, you know, and again, we're going to end up with trash along the road. We need to figure out something to do to make it really detrimental to, 30 days suspension would really make it detrimental, but I, I don't know.
The fine, not per offense, but per pound or per ton of trash?
I'll be absolutely, and this is not something I've been came for, but conversations I have had. If we actually had to go as far, we could charge them with a criminal offense. That's where the criminal offense allows it. Now you're charging, you could charge an entity. You could charge the individual dumper. No. no, the individual hauler of who's actually operating the vehicle because he knows the route he took, he know whether his superiors told him to go outside. Absolutely, what you're saying is in state law for, it is littering. You are not welcome to dump your trash at the landfill. I'm not advocating to charge any company or any person criminally, but if we had to go that far, that's where there are increased punishments and penalties if we had to get there. I'm not advocating for it, this is the opposite approach.
Yeah.
But if there came a point in time where somebody, if a hauler came in with an entire load of Delaware trash, and Adam called me and said, we've looked through everything, it's all Delaware, I'd say, call a sheriff.
All right, so what, here's what I'm going to suggest really. So that we can at least move off of this and it'll give us time to think about it before we actually pass the final legislative bill. I would say, A, the first offense will be five days, period. B would be thirty days, and C would remain as a two-year period, an offense in a two-year period would be a prohibition. That's where I would say we leave it and then between now and the next two weeks, discuss it with whomever you choose, and let's see how we're going to amend it before we pass it. Is that reasonable? Because I, I think from what Dave said, the thirty, established thirty days initially is a, is going to create a serious problem.
Yeah.
We don't know yet what the implication of the five day is, but because we can't rely on, on financial penalties, this is about all we have to go on. So I'm only going to say, in order for us to move ahead and think about where we're going to be at the next meeting, five days on the first offense, thirty on the second, and prohibited, prohibited on the third, and figure it out.
Well, let me, there's always a, you know, what's the old saying, there's always a way around the law. So the towing companies in Wycomico County and the state of Maryland, it's towing now, T-O-W-I-N-G, they get on a rotating list with the state police or different towns. So what do they do? They've got four tow trucks, they form four corporations. So they're, they're on the list four times. So if we put some kind of a law, I think, I think what's going to happen, if we put a law in initially suspending somebody, there's, there's going to be some kind of creation of some way to get around it.
What we can do is.
And I agree that something needs to be done, don't get me wrong, but.
And then we'll be before council in six months saying, here's the problem, we have all of these haulers creating, all these different entities, and now we need to shut down the landfill of commercial haulers.
Well, either that or we need to make another law or something, yeah.
And I, I, I think it's a little difficult because towing has insurance, but you can call up and you can get a corporate bond and they, they came up with that plan to be that way. It's going to take a while to get incorporated with that stat, to get their approval of their various state entities to be, you know, to have all of their sub LLCs and create, you know, trash company one, trash company two, trash company three. And if they want to go that route, then we'll have another conversation, we'll say, look at this entity, they created ten more because they got banned, and each time they came, they got banned. So, and hopefully by then, we'll have some commercial hauler legislation and we'll just completely prohibit that company or any subdivision of that company from doing business whatsoever. Again, it's in their interest to not get penalized. They do not want to have to take all of their trash somewhere else. It will cost them more, it will cost their customers more, their customers will shop around to people who can be compliant. And so my optimism is that based on your conversations, based on the severity of what it will mean to their business, to their employees, to their customers, they are going to comply.
Mr. Luminati?
But that could be naivety.
No, I, I don't think so. On the section two of source notices concern, the only thing that I was concerned about is that you talk about how it's in writing. I would suggest that you add to that, that the, the notify the hauler in writing by certified mail of a suspension. In that way, there's no question as to whether or not it was lost in the mail. That's a two A.
I think we're going to serve them a citation right on the spot, but, yeah.
But since this is in the bill, I'm assuming that if you're going to suggest somebody sends something in writing, it'd have to be by certified mail. And in B, instead of saying ten days from the date the letter is written, I would say ten days from the date of acknowledging, acknowledgement of receipt of the suspension.
So here's the other side of certified mail.
Mm-hmm.
Just don't go to the post office and pick it up. I never received it. I mean, that's.
Well, they'll say, they'll say that if you wrote them and you sent them a regular letter.
No, because I, I don't read, in writing.
What, I think what attorneys do, we send out certified mail and regular mail. And then if they don't go pick up the certified mail, they, they still are getting the regular mail. So the notice, I think, would go out both regular and certified mail. The certified mail shows that you sent it to them. Whether they picked it up or not's their problem.
Something else we could do too, I mean, like Andrew said, and I agree, we would, we would give them a citation onsite the day they were, they were there, come before they leave the scale house. The other part would be the PDF document of that via email to the company as well, with a read receipt, you know, they're, they're going to get the acknowledgement some way, but I don't necessarily know that certified mail covers it all the way.
Okay, well, whatever you recommend, and if the three of you can come to a consensus on what is the most efficient way, if it's three sources, I don't care, that would be great. And the other thing I was going to say, change it from the ten days after the note of the letter, the date of the letter. I mean, I get notices from the city of Salisbury, and the date on the letter was like two days after I've been given the deadline to cut the grass. Happens a lot. So I just want to make sure that this is an efficient process.
I, you raise a good point. I mean, somebody mailed a letter to me from a block down from my office, it took ten days for it to get to me because it goes to Baltimore and.
That makes a lot of sense.
So the ten days from the date mailed probably doesn't work with the post office situation.
So I guess what do we do?
Again, the, it's written as the date the letter is written, my, the.
Maybe just make it twenty.
Okay.
It's a long time, but I just want to make sure that there's sufficient time as, you know.
Okay.
That we're just, okay.
Yep, we'll do, the sturgency, the urgency of this matter is going to be, the written notice is going to be happening onsite. They're not going to leave without getting that written notice.
Okay.
Because we have how much space, less than a year, about a year.
Gotcha.
At the current consumption. So, okay, that's that. Going into, so then we rewrite five to amend five to go forward. Then we get into a lot of the meat and striking in full, all the provisions that relate to out of county waste. We create an article three titled landfill convenience center and recycling center hours of operation for 156, section fourteen, which then governs when the landfills open. And clarifying some language in there to add that this is in accordance with the Department of the Environment's refuse disposal permit. Strike 156-15 in full, 156-16 in full, that all addresses applicability of commercial haulers and out of county waste. Strike 156-17 in full, because again, that was relating to out of county waste. And then turn what was 156-18 authority and amendments into 156-15 to allow council to amend the tipping fee by resolution. Again, the hours of operation, solid waste facility list, that's all governed by state, by the, by MDE. So, and that all gets approved as part of the ten-year plan. And so, striking.
Was striking the hours, sorry?
I don't, leaving the hours in is fine, but the, the ability of council to change the hours, the recommendation is to strike that, because if tomorrow you change the hours to say that the landfill opens at five and closes at seven, that's in violation of the state permit. So the state permit would trump and the law would be meaningless. So this is all controlled by the state permit. So some of this is just cleaning up with that full understanding now that the ability to review all the governing documents has occurred.
I think the intent of putting that in there was not relating to changing the hours from five AM to 10 PM at night, rather it was that if there was a reason that, that there needed to be a temporary change to hours for some reason, that the council could do that by resolution as opposed to having to re, to do a legislative bill.
Just one point on hours. So if, if the landfill ever does need to operate outside of its permitted hours, we, we just, we ask for permission on the spot. And sometimes that's very, very rapid. There may be cases where we can't wait for a county resolution. For example, we have a hurricane come through and we need to shut down operations because we can't legally, you know, we can't in a proper and compliant way accept waste that day, for example.
Which is why I'd not codify that.
Or, or we have to stay open later, like we, our landfill's going to remain open until nine PM tonight because, you know, there was a tornado that came through. I mean, anything, you know what I mean? But all we have to do is send an email to the state, typically they approve those kinds of things pretty fast.
So the, the purpose, the reason this is in here, and this, this meeting has been helpful from my perspective, and things have gone well in the meeting, and there seems to be compromise. So I don't want to ruin that. But the reason that this language was in here was because there was some thought that there was going to be a closure of the, of, of the landfill on certain days without the council being aware of it or the public being aware of it. And the point of this was not to extend the hours, but not to allow the, the landfill to be closed without the council input.
And keep in mind, that's also public input. When you, when you talk about council input, that's public input. So yes, I would not want to strike eighteen.
Well, it's rephrasing eighteen as fifteen based on some of the other amendments, but there are other changes in there. Again, I, I don't think you have the authority to do that, but.
Have the authority to do what?
Change the hours of operation that's governed by.
Well, they have, they have the authority to change the hours of operation, they just can't exceed the hours that are in the permit. They can reduce them.
Good, and there may be cases where we have to, like I say, if you had a, if you had a six inch brain storm, we may have to say, folks, I'm sorry, I cannot take waste today.
And we're leaving the temporary emergency changes in there because that's governed, but.
Correct.
Overall governing of the hours of operation and the solid waste facility list is by the state. We can't tomorrow.
Correct.
Open up a brand new landfill, a different location to serve someone else. Like that's all governed by the state permit. So my recommendation is, it's superfluous, it's unnecessary, the authority doesn't exist for the department to open its own, to go against the solid waste facility list and create a brand new landfill somewhere. We've learned today about what that operational process is.
I think the purpose of it honestly is why we're here today. The purpose of 156-18 is why we're here today, because we don't want any unnecessary measures being taken before it's been vetted by the public and by the county council. And that's simply what 156-18 dictates. We're not trying to overstep our boundaries and say, we're going to change the hours. We would never change the hours without first talking to these people and knowing exactly what we're attempting to do. But that is the purpose of 156-18. So.
I just think if, if there's a space to draw the line between council and executive branch, this is one where it fits more in the executive branch. I don't know that we need to, to jump in there, but of course, we're only doing that to react to changes. But I would rather us not be interfering with anything, especially anything that is, relates to state permit, that should go to the county executive's office.
And I'm, you know, Mr. Benson, of course, has a different opinion, I think, than Mr. Luminati on, on what this entails and, and, and the authorities it creates. So I, I honestly don't have a problem with, with where it is and why it's in here.
I don't either.
I, I, just one other quick point. The reference was that the emergency legislation as written allowed out of county waste. The emergency legislation merely recognized that the county already took out of county waste and in fact issued permits for out of county waste. So the change here is that the, there has been agreement between the executive and the council, if this is adopted, to not permit any future out of county waste. So the change is that the original emergency bill simply recognized an existing circumstance, that existing circumstance would be changed by agreement between the executive and the council by eliminating out of county waste completely now.
Mr. Luminati, we are at the end of it, are we?
I believe so.
Any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Josh.
Adam, how are you going to make, make out if, if you, fifteen percent reduction in out of county waste, maybe, hopefully? What are you going to do about that as far as fifteen percent reduction?
Revenue?
Revenue.
Yeah, I think Charles answered their, answered those questions a little earlier. I'd like Charles to answer them again, frankly.
I mean, you're not.
Not a finance specialist, by any stretch.
You're not going to have a decrease in employees, you're not going to have.
No, we're not. But hopefully, again, like he said, we're going to have, you know, again, I've said it here before, and again, I'd, I'd rather have Charles up here to answer this, but there is a correlation between the intensity of your operation, the amount of waste you bring in, how much it costs to actually perform the work for that. I don't have a great answer other than, you know, I, we need to see a reduction in waste.
So I have to keep going back to the Ocean City, Worcester County thing.
Okay.
Ocean, Worcester County razor tipping fee.
Right.
Ocean City bowed out and started having the trash, and apparently it sent the revenues of their, their landfill into a tailspin, so they had to, you know, start funding it out of taxpayers.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm looking at that and thinking, okay.
Regardless of where, certainly, regardless of where we stand right now with, with cell seven and the out of county waste and all that other stuff, you know, we were already on a trajectory to not being financially solvent regardless of a decrease in, prepared for decrease in waste and revenue based on getting rid of out of county trash. Our friends in Worcester County are seeing an increase in tonnage right now because people are getting the message from this conversation we've been having here that, you know, Wycomico is getting ready to say, sorry, folks, we're not taking any more out of county trash. So, you know, I don't mean to make this comment flippantly, I, I think everything is going to work out in the end, and I'm going to rely on folks that know finance better than me.
I just kind of wanted to know.
Yeah, no, I, I, we know we're going to have a deduction in revenue, there's no doubt. Our tipping fee does increase in January. The Wycomico's county trash though, you should always see a steady increase in it, a, a slow, you know, trend that, that you can rely on.
Chick-fil-A's right.
Yeah, right. So when, when you have that coming in, and I don't want to say it's a captive audience, but for a lack of a better term, it is, right? If, if Worcester, Delaware, Somerset and Dorchester are in the same boat of saying, we're not taking out of county trash, that means all of Wycomico's is going to come to us, which is supposed to. So at the end of the day, I'm hoping that math works out. We're not taking in more than we can handle, our revenues are where they need to be, we're not overextending ourselves on expenses. So I really truly think, for lack of a better term, we're going to be all right. But again, I, I know finance had some of that, Charles in his presentation, I know he can do a deeper dive on it. That's certainly not my strong suit.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Josh. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just two quick things. First of all, should we concurrently be going to try to change state law? If we can, if we could address this through fines, that would be a whole lot easier than shutting down operations and that component seems like could be dangerous in the sense that we'd be left with trash piling up, and that's always a challenge. So I'd rather just to be able to address it through fines. So I don't know if concurrently we should try to go to the state and have state legislation to lift that up to ten thousand or seventy-five hundred or whatever. That's one question. And then the second piece is just, I'm, I'm always going to bring this up, or at least I know it is stylistically what we do, but we are writing code again with the his or the hers. I know that we do that as, pardon me, they, just the his, like in this case, the 156-56-5, you know, the public works or his designee, and the pronouns, I know that's what we always traditionally do, but we've had two more counties go and remove that. And I mean, it just seems a bit stupid and sexist. So I'd rather take it out with like their or the. But if, if there's any ways we could do that or move in that direction, I know that that always, it always irks me every time I see that.
I just pointed out the planning commission legislation completely removed chairman, made it chair, referred to it as members. Sometime it's just going to, it's one word is better than eight other modifiers before it. I will try to rewrite that going forward.
Yeah, let's say their or the, Howard County just pulled out theirs, I think it was, all of the other ones.
I believe our charter specifically stick relates that any reference to his refers to his or them, they, whatever.
They then.
So we do have that in the law.
We can take that out of the law.
Reference, but it actually, it actually covers all.
Sure, understood.
You know, I mean, we could change it, say they, and.
Yeah, their or the or they.
This might have been pointed out already, and I've, I've got a question, and this is not to find fault, but just to understand, cell seven, we're expediting the best we can, was it in fact way behind the timeline? How much money might have lost for, for whatever reason, again, not to, not to.
Sure. I actually was reviewing a letter that I thought. Sure. Um, I actually was reviewing a letter that I thought about putting into this slideshow and I just didn't know if the context would make any difference or not. I'd like to show it to you tomorrow when you come, um, when you do your tour and we sit down and look at some of these older documents. But there was an authorization to proceed in October of twenty twenty-two, uh, for cell seven. Yeah, for that.
Authorization to proceed.
Yeah, not necessarily with construction, but would have started the process we're working on with DARL.
Okay.
I mean, that was, that was in the cards. That was October twenty twenty-two.
Again, I'm, we've, uh.
Yeah, especially when you've got, uh, cells like cell, well, all of them for that matter, but cell eight filling as fast as it is, you know, cell ten and nine filling the way they did. Yeah. Wait, I, I'll, I'll say, I've said it before, I'll say it again. I don't ever want to see the county in this situation again.
Well, and we might not even be talking about out of county necessarily.
As being the main contributor?
Yeah. Well, maybe we would, but if, if cell seven were back when that authorization was.
Yeah, there was discussions. I mean, I, I reviewed some of the old PAC fourteen footage of, you know, previous managers of the landfills sitting right here at this table. Everybody had a mask on their face, uh, talking about where we were with tipping fees, where we were with out of county trash. And, uh, this isn't anything new. It's just, we're, we're doing something about it. You know, it, it's, it's overdue. So I hope we move forward into the future the right direction. I really think we are now. Um, we just got to play catch up and then we're going to be where we need to be. But I don't ever want to see this happen again for everybody's benefit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure.
Entertaining motion of adjourned to go into closed session.
To move.
To move.
Second.
Favor.